Assessors map thirty-four A, block A, lot one point eight in his own village. In accordance with sections two hundred dash three point two, two hundred dash five, two hundred dash seven point one D and two hundred. Yeah, seven point two of the chopping zone in Biola's, the chopping plan will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M by a Zoom meeting, meeting ID number two and one, two nine three, two two five seven. An in-person meeting at thirty-seven Main Street, Cheltenham, so on five oh seven. On the request of Richard Care, thirty, no more drugs, Cheltenham, Mass, on five oh seven for a site plan. And special permanent activation to construct multi-story houses for a total of sixteen units, four units per building, the property colony is vacant. The property contains approximately two point two three acres, the property is located on Trolley Crossing Road in Masonic Home Road. The property ID is assesses map thirty-four A, block A, lot one point eight in his own village, this meeting of chopping plane board. Will be conducted in person by remote participation, specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of. The public and our parties, the right and a required to attendance meeting can be found on the town trial website, W W W dot town chopping dot net. And this meeting members of the public who wish into this listener watch the meeting may do so in the following manner, video participation, H T T S colon. Backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash two and one, two nine three, two two five seven. Meeting ID two and one, two nine three, two two five seven, phone access one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the playing board office. The town courts office during regular with this is ours, the application is also posted on the town. Website and their playing board, any present listen to. Person interested wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. I mean, the turn over to the applicants engineer presentation.
Thank you, I'm Jason DuBois, the DC engineering and survey and development. Also is is Richard Care, the owner of the property as well as well. This property is located on the corner of Masonic Home Road and Trolley Crossing Road. Um, I'm just sort of, we can see it. Uh, just the slight focus property is um. Right in this area here. Um, and let me just get the existing conditions. As you're entering. Trolley Crossing Road off of Masonic Home Road, which would be right here. You come up Trolley Crossing Road here, heading up the hill and property is on your left-hand side. Uh, two point two, three acres with frontage along Masonic Home and all the way up. Trolley Crossing through here, uh, it's mostly a mode, a mode field that gets mowed down a couple of times during the growing season. Uh, with a couple of areas in the field that's some old ground brush, uh, and some tree areas. Uh, there is a wetland area located, uh, a thin strip along the Sonic Home Road here. And a little wetland that comes in off the corner of the property right through here. Property mostly slopes down from here and comes down towards Masonic Home Road and. Ultimately, the water flows down through here and it goes underneath the Sonic Home Road. Project includes. Four, uh, four family. Buildings, uh, there's two here. One here and one here, all with individual driveways off the Trolley Crossing Road. Uh, that would come in, turn into the building here and here with parking in the back. Uh, this one would be the same as below, and this one is the same except this, there's two. Um, each would have two-way traffic in and out of the parking lots. Um, these buildings are proposed to be tied into town, uh, water and sewer utilities. Uh, the water currently is on the property. Uh, it stops at the corner here and there's sewer as well that runs down. Through the property, through a few separate manholes and then back out into the, into the street, um, so these buildings would all just be tied into that. Um, we have some proposed landscaping shown at the entrances. And along each side of the driveways as you enter the, enter the sites as well as some, some trees to be planted around the parking lots. Um, this dash line would just be the zoning setback line that goes around the property. This next plan basically just shows. The proposed site grades. As well as drainage infrastructure. Um, so these sites would be sloping down into the, into the parking lots and the, and the driveways from Sonic Home Road. Approximately a, about a five percent grade into the sites. Um, and there's basically, it's like a tiered, tiered design, so kind of goes along with the hill. So these, these buildings here are like drive unders from the front, so you have a garage. At the lower level, and then you see a second floor above that, um, and up in the back. Uh, that lower level was basically built up, so. Like I said, the front of these buildings is kind of designed as, as walkouts. Um, so it's, it's flat, you know, out of the building and then it slopes down. For the next, the next tiered backyard drops eight feet or nine feet to the walkout elevation flat. Uh, and so on throughout, throughout the site, uh, we do have catch basins located, um, where this water would be flowing. Kind of in this direction, so there's, there's catch basins here and here, um, and the whole thing just kind of. It kind of, you know, keeps, keeps going down and down until you get into the infiltration basin, uh, to treat the water and, you know, slow it down. Um, and ultimately releases back to the same, same location. Now, we don't have any. Any parking lot, um, light poles proposed. Um, the idea is to, you know, keep it residential, so it mostly just going to have, um, no building lights at this time, which propose. Um, I think Rich has. Some color renderings of his, yeah, hi- his idea of what, of what these would look like. Um, he's would have the, the drive under shown, uh, below. And then it would just slope up towards the back.
Are you planning garages?
Yeah, right now there's proposed, uh, yeah, the idea would have like a single garage bay for each, each unit.
It's all the usual.
What's that?
All the usual, they're going, did this step in down?
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that's how it's, that's how it's designed, is to each have a, have a garage. Oh, Rich had one.
One bay, one, one bay.
Yeah, single days, single days. Well, if you had anything else to add at this time, then.
Um. Any particular questions? I think the, maybe the, uh, the point I provided that, that's, those are examples of what I envisioned there, okay, these, these are, these are two-story. Townhouses, okay? The building, the building footprints, as you can see from the plans, are forty by one hundred. Four thousand square foot, the two stories of that, they're eight thousand total. And the, uh, so the units would, that would, that would come up to about two thousand square feet per unit of which I would envision somewhere in the vicinity of. You know, three to four hundred square feet, that would be, would be the garage. So you'll end up with somewhere in that fifteen hundred square foot facility for living space. Okay, uh, I also envision there being ten, two-bedroom units. Um. My guess would be. That this would be a great place for singles or couples. He says they're two, they're two-bedroom type units, okay, and, uh. You know, I'm quite excited about the project, I, well, even though I was on, actually, actually I've been underdeveloped for ten years myself, I was in this room quite a bit. And, uh, is very excited about the whole village district concept. And I look at this as being. One of the first real, you know, movement in that direction. And, and, and I know myself being, you know, a thirty, forty-year resident of childhood. Um. Demographics show that, you know, the late eighties, early nineties, we had a big influx of, of them being, including my, my wife and, and myself. And we're now at the point where. The children are out of the house, well, they have a big houses. And I've heard it so many times, people say, you know, I love the town, love traveling. But I want a great house anyway, I want the maintenance, I consult with, and I've got no place to go. So. This is, it's a perfect fit, it's the village district, village district. And, uh, it's that. It's only sixteen units, but that would satisfy some of those people I mentioned, and also it could, it could be a young couple who come in and says, you know, I don't want a house, I don't want all the maintenance. I work a lot, and I, I just want a nice place to live, you know? And again, as you all know, with the village district, it's, uh, it, it's one thing is, is walking, walking the community, for me, you can walk into, into, uh, into town. Which is going to bulk, and I think over time, I'd like to see more and more of this, particularly in that village district. And then at that point, I think you'd have enough critical tasks to be able to add in. Um, you know, some support, um, the commercial type. You know, buildings, you know, diners and things like that, that would, that would, um, would be beneficial to, um. For the, for the residents to enjoy, so, 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 um. That's, that's, that's my basic. Whole idea, and I've been, I've been very excited about it for a long time, I now have all the infrastructure in place, I got water, some public water, a couple of years back, which I needed. I thought if I'm an architect, yeah, to do that, this type of a project, I had to have public water, I just didn't have enough, I drilled a well years ago, but it was insufficient. For me, to, uh, to do this type of a project, so, um, I, you know, I, I, I'm excited about the project, I'm excited about the design. I think the three tiers, buildings such as those would just be, uh, you know, real, uh, very attractive and be real high demand, I, I believe this time. So that's, um, it's pretty much what I, what I'm going for.
And I'll just say too, I know Kurt had, had issued a letter recently, just kind of going through the, you know, the use and the, um. You know, as far as the density goes, it does meet the. With, with, yeah, the village district requirements, um, and I know that we also have a Graves' comment letter, uh, to go through and we'll make, we'll make those adjustments as needed. Um, we're just kind of opening this up for comments and anything else that, you know, to address. There were a couple waivers that we requested, uh, they're on the cover sheet, and one of them, I, I think I get exactly the wording in the, in the Biola's, but it was regarding the landscaping. Um, I think it says landscaping is required in the village along the entire, I think this is like the impact setback or something on, on those words. Um, which, you know, very long to do that. And so, like I said, we, we did have landscaping proposed at the entrances. Uh, where we can fit, where we can fit landscaping. Um, and then the other, the other waiver was a sidewalk, which we can discuss that, um, there's a sidewalk right now on the other side of the street. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't see it necessary to do on both sides of the street. Once we can still do that, but that's just kind of a little.
Is there sidewalk access from one building to another?
No, 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 just because of the way that they tiered. Okay, um, you know, we certainly add. I guess have to go through the town, but add motor crosswalk to the sidewalk.
There's three separate entrances, or?
Yes, you have current cuts in there.
Yeah, but there is, there's no access from one building to another.
What's the great, what's the great difference ballpark from building to building? As you go down, so it's going, coming from the top of, of Trolley Crossing, heading towards the Sonic Home, just ballpark.
So there's like eight and nine feet up between.
Yeah, the buildings and then, I mean, the. Yeah, like the back of this building is eight twenty-five and then we're eight, well, that's actually sloping up, but yeah, it's like eight feet from front to back.
Yeah.
Um, and then it does, it slopes down off the back of the parking lot like another four or five feet to build on. So this, this road is, is fairly steep, it's like a.
You know what, Dave, you're gonna not have to work? I'm wondering if seven.
Have to work hypothetically Monday through. Friday. What I'm planning on doing is once we get there, just spoken to Dave's up with him.
Thank you.
What's the, the other driveway way beyond your, your property?
Yeah, this is the Zinhering Center.
Do they, they have two entrances, one in and one out?
Yeah, well, just. Saint Vincent said, what, just one, Saint Vincent's. Yeah, then we have, we have, we go right up to the parking lot.
Right, this is their edge of the property line here, and their parking lot is like right up against, right on the property line.
And they're on water and sewer also?
They are on water and sewer, yes, they, we all contributed to the water line that came in. Um, the old howl up area, uh, because you've been saying since, and being the two with their expansion needed a big amount of public water. So I could, I could, I could contribute toward it, I think Camarcis and also, so that, so they're on water and sewer, I think they'd be sewer actually. Via twenty, so.
Now, there's actually, the sewer line goes in front of your property now?
I, I, but I have, so when I bought that property, I bet, I bet that property for fifteen years, probably. And what I did is I had to sell it. Put in five hundred foot sewer line, five, on my property, okay, and starts up, up, up toward. Probably that second building I was saying, right, probably in between the, the top and the, about eighty dollars. And it goes all the way down and is connected to, um, Sonic Home. And that's all my source, what, what essentially is a big lateral, and I actually. When I did it, I had them put in three manhole cuttings all the way down, so it's all right, right there to go. Which is actually correct.
Yeah, there's a manhole here. And a manhole there, and then a manhole right here.
Your property doesn't go down to Route twenty?
No.
Are there, are these on a slab, is that any basement?
No, my, my thought would be, would be, would be a slab.
Yeah. You know, the drive-in level, yeah, the driveway levels would be right, yeah.
But I thought the one bay garage is what I said, you know, people like them. Press the button, come on in, right? And of course you have to have some extra spaces for, because you have compressors and something, they, they have some, they provisions for all that.
How about, what, what's your, your plan for HVAC?
Uh, I, 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 I have to tell you, I, my, I, my plan is not to build these myself, I have a ton invested in this over the years, I think. My intention is, I've got all the infrastructure. I want to get the sun plan through, my thing is to bring in either a really big developer, just take the whole thing and do it. Or bring in possibly part of it, a couple of boats to do it. Um, I haven't built, I built some big things, but that was thirty years ago, I don't have the context anymore, or the park is that deep that goes on this big.
I think by the time this were to get built, I mean, we're talking in five months from now, the building built in required to be the law electric anyways.
Well, really, yeah, yeah, no question, how about solar?
I, I don't know about, you know, if, if, if I were building it, I think what I would do, but if, if I go back to a question about HVAC. Uh, my daughter just had, actually was in Charlotte, just did one two weeks ago. Um, she did one of those, uh, comb, combing units, which is. You familiar with them?
That's what, that's what bases in the acquire.
Yeah, that, yeah, and that, that was pretty.
Air source heat pump?
That, that one, and, and that's another option, it's an air source heat pump, which I think is a great idea also. Um, I don't, I don't, myself, I wouldn't envision, you know, an oil, you know, by a system or anything like that, I would.
Just curious.
I wouldn't, you know, the remains there, and I, you know, I would envision, you see the pictures, those are, those are some of my good ideas. Of what I think would look terrific up there, okay, I, I, I'm big on things looking terrific, really, really great, I mean. And, uh, I've been involved with a bunch of, back, St. Joseph's in Charleston, myself and Ross's father, actually, we were co-chair, we spent nine years. Co-chairing all the communities to build the church, St. Joseph's, so I'm, you know, I am, and I've been on a, on a, to move for years. I am a big, um, I can sell childhood all day long, I love childhood, my, we have like four kids here. And, and I'm really proud of everything we've done, and we've evolved, well, my wife and I evolved with everything in town, it seems like, and, uh. I'm excited about this, I look at this as, it was, yeah, it's an opportunity to do something very significant in this town, it's, it's a long way overdue, okay? So we've got the right piece, we've got the right zoning, I asked, I brought the best engineering. To, uh, get involved with it, and I said, I want this thing done, and I want it done. I want it done beautifully, I want, I want to get this right by that rest of my life, my kids, I want us to look at and say, boy, that is really something, you know? And then I want to see people in there enjoying the property and, and enjoying the town, and I know there's, there's thoughts about. Similar things going in nearby too, so I, I see this as a first. Little mini-village within a larger village, that's how I look at it.
Cool, coming off, you said there's four drives going into three, how wide are they?
Twenty, twenty-four feet.
Two, four, two?
Yeah.
It's, it's tough to see here, how many external parking spots per unit, is there?
So, right now, the requirement is, uh, is two point two five per unit. Um, which would require thirty-six, so we have thirty-six shown, um, and that doesn't include the, you know, the eight that would be in the, or the sixteen in the garage.
Mm-hmm.
Um. This area over here, we might have to modify slightly with the wetland, so if we have to lose a few of these spaces, we'll still have enough, including garage space. Uh, right now, there's thirty-six shown, not including the sixteen garage spaces.
We got, we actually, exactly, six, sixteen garage plus.
Yeah, so even losing those two spots in that bottom one, you still have enough for that unit there? Are you sure of that unit, you mean, you're letting it hold?
Well, it, it's. Right now, we have enough parking space, not including the garage space, which the garage actually counts for another section.
And, and these are townhomes, not apartments, the ownership.
These would be townhouse style, up and down, two stories, not red walls. Again. Whoever, whoever builds it, my assumption would be they were building itself. I mean, I know myself, I have the property, and, and, you know, from the standpoint of cash flow, I think it's pretty difficult. To, uh, bring, bring new units and have a box of cash flow out of the box, and I guess it'll be sold.
Who would take care of maintaining? The outside?
I think what would happen is they have a condo association. With a, with a, with a whole, you know, HOA.
Yeah.
Right, and, and I think another thing is, you know, again, you think about anyone, particularly, particularly a senior age type. You know, one of the reasons they're buying is they, they don't want the maintenance anymore.
Right, right.
And you go to a lot of, you go to a lot of places, that, that have condos, and somebody gets away from you, that's astronomical. And I don't think, if this was the case, they would be a priority, I guarantee you don't, because I think we're out, we're out of the blocks, and if I'm building it. I'm putting, I'm putting about a forty-year, um, asphalt, uh, architectural asphalt shingles on, so that's, that's something I have to worry about. Nowadays, the siding, uh, probably a good amount of it would be. Probably a vinyl siding, which nowadays they put on million and two million dollar houses, because it looks better than a lot of the. The, uh, the old clapboard wood siding, and again, no maintenance, so, you know, those are a couple of big things. So in, 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 I don't, I don't see it having a lot of, being a very expensive place to run. For, for a, um, for a condo association, so I would imagine a HOA can be pretty reasonable, actually.
Yeah, I was just thinking lawn pair and all that, and.
Not, there's not much in the way, lawns, you have to worry about snow falling, lawns and so forth, but I don't see anything too excessive, actually.
So on the bankings between the building, what is that slope covered with, is that?
Uh, it'd be grass.
It would be grass, so there is some. Landscape.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be some meat.
Along this, along the side of the building, that's basically between, I guess, that's the north side. There's some landscaping there, is that? There's a lot of hill there, there's a lot of.
Yeah, it's slopes, I mean, it'd be just one slope, this area down here that's tight, near the wetland is, is riprap, just because it's a one-to-one area.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, that may end up changing, so.
So everything else that's not paved or building would be.
Lawn, landscaping, okay.
So there is quite a bit of lawn in there that would be pavements. If, we'll make sure there was something going in there, it was just going to get overgrown.
Right.
Okay. All right, we have the Graves' report, and you guys have actually had a chance to comment on it. So, um, and then you have that letter from Kurt where you kind of. But the point of, um. The sidewalk which you brought up was one of those things.
Yes.
And then, um. Other than some building stuff that doesn't have a potential for playing with. As far as, um, building code plan here.
What you brought up, for example, which, um, they're putting up some climate and that, you got electric vehicle charging.
That's part of the, um, that's not a town, that's a state, it's a building, that falls under that.
I, I don't know if Kurt realized that these had under, had, you said, provides, you know, having a charging, because my thought would be, if I were doing that, I'd have a char, I have a, a provision for charging in every garage. Down and go, ten years from now, we're all going to have electric power, right? Nowadays, you see one once in a while, and personal, yeah, personally, I don't like the idea of having a couple of charges. You see out in the middle, you know, if I take in two spaces with a couple of charges, I could be a permission for, for charging, every garage is a way to go.
Well, it kind of makes sense to you too, I. You've got a, hopefully you probably use that charger, not something outside of.
This is following the subdivision, does it say subdivision?
No.
No, it does not, single lot.
Okay.
No. They're over small parking.
Twenty-four foot wide, meaning.
But you gotta have accessibility for the vehicle, two-way traffic stuff.
Yes, the driveway, like martial driving.
Yeah.
Now, if they have company. I'm just thinking when people parking on it and other people trying to back out, is that wide enough?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it means the same standard as any other park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Some drivers are better than none.
Yeah.
So, so one comment I would like, one thing I'd like to see, if you're really considering this to be like a village district and you want to create a sense of community in there. Having some sort of access between buildings without having to go out and walk down the road or rock across road, get on the sidewalk, come back in. Just seems like it, it's a natural thing for it to be, I don't know if it's possible to get sidewalks in or, you know, between the houses and between the properties. Um. Provides them a little walkable area instead of, you know, walking out, crossing the street, walking down, crossing the street to get to a sidewalk.
So I agree, the sidewalk on the other side is fine, but maybe just a path or a walk.
I never commented.
All right, we're not going to open up to the public yet, because they still, I mean, they still have some engineering stuff that they care, so it's not, it's going to take more than one meeting, all right? So, um. John, you got any comment or anything, nothing good?
All right. The only active, such protective outside of.
Go ahead.
On that, Masonic Home side of the property, just before that, it's on the side of Masonic Home. Then it crosses the road. Up here somewhere.
Yeah. At the end of the property?
Yeah, so.
So there is sidewalk.
Having, having sidewalks on the Sonic Home Road portion of the property, it might make sense. So that people can walk down to the intersection, because there's nothing on the other side.
But is there anything heading from this property towards Route twenty as far as sidewalk though, or no?
No, there's.
There's none up there.
There is sidewalk, yeah. Yeah, that's, I don't know where it ends. Um, this sidewalk here ends actually right here.
Right.
And then this comes across and crosses and then keeps coming up.
Oh, it does go, it does go down to twenty already.
Yeah, I don't know how far down it goes, but.
Does it go all the way up?
Well, it's, of course, you have to worry about. Your property, you know?
Yeah, there is sidewalk on, you know.
Sad sight there. I didn't, I thought it stopped, it's always, it's, it's down.
Yeah, I don't know how far down it goes, yeah, it says asphalt sidewalk, I didn't envision this with the, you know, sidewalk.
Yeah, correct, all right. Okay. Good thing. All right, seeing how the applicant has some engineering questions to answer. Um. Do you want us to continue the public hearing?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the, uh, air property on Trolley Crossing.
February seventh.
The February seventh.
The seven ten.
That's a. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you guys. All right. Next up, we have a A and R from the Stevens Family Trust on Freeman Road. We have not heard from the lawyer as far as the, uh, questioning about the validity of their application. Right, let's, let's.
No, I, uh, the attorney contacted the.
Want that out or?
Contacted him. He had, yeah, he said he would see this Friday, get back today, but I'm conscious of. Um, we didn't know, we knew he was definitely asking.
All right. Jimmy, nice little bone on that one, I'll just, just leave.
Just leave.
Okay.
All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for stone reduced furniture law and common driveways special permit on G L Roads. Sorry, I'm gonna hear from the lawyer.
Okay. Cause I think. You know. Attorney, you said that, right, being, you know, you can be a month of loss.
Yeah.
So we need to present to us, do we wanna go that route?
Has a lawyer, have you been in contact with the lawyer for this, for that A and R?
Going back to the seven oh five. Stan, Stevens Family Trust item.
He hasn't said he, he went the other to be. But when you read the document.
Our attorney or?
Our attorney.
Okay.
When you read the document, the. Over the trust, which is his father. Is the actual.
He's the trustee.
Trustee until the path is the, the next, the beneficiary people, well, at the time. It's his application, he's so.
So is this something that should go to our attorney, or should we go to the town's attorney?
Jim Conville, like, into the news, our attorney, because he's not that new.
Question than a land use question, absolutely, this isn't a land use question.
The town will cover, we have services for sure. It's not gonna come from the county or the company.
We are.
So, I, I guess the question, so we get good service from. The law firm that, that they're using. McKay is not getting, I mean, we've had, had to wait several times for McKay.
So, while we reach out to, to my friend, the law school. I think he's plan B, also be one of.
Is he still talking?
Why wouldn't he?
He doesn't talk to anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the question, is, is. If they're not getting back to us in a timely manner, and it's been a couple of times.
Yeah, I know, I don't understand what's the problem.
Okay.
I think it's too long for.
Maybe a nicely worded letter to them saying if they're not gonna provide us the services that we require, then maybe we need to find somebody else.
Okay.
Well, that was the more, is it our responsibility to do that, or is it? The person who wants to do this to the property showing us that this can be done?
His, his attorney provided us through a letter that said that. You know, he feels this can be done.
An illegal end of it, yeah.
One in the ride in September where he says that. Decorated the estate, which. His name would be.
Yeah.
Just trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So next up, we have a public hearing continued for stone reduced furniture law and common driveway special permit to G L Road. The applicant has requested to be continued for February twenty first. You have a motion to continue the public hearing for the stone reduced furniture law and common driveway special permit out of February twenty fourth.
Uh, so moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Uh, aye.
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 Oh, I understand. Just ready to vote. On the G L Road.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for Curtis Hill Estates, Curtis Hill Development, considering plant off of Old Spencer Road. In our packet, we have a letter from the Charlton Heritage Trust about their site visit. Are we able to make the site visit?
I was done. Then the weather got cold.
Oh, yeah.
If it clears up and warms up a day, I may just go right out there, if that's okay, just to, just to access through.
I'd walk up the rail, the railroad.
Is it somebody from here, from the history?
Janet and Bill Glazier. Okay, awesome, great, thank you for coming.
Yep.
Now, did you do the site visit along with Lisa? Okay, awesome, all right, go right ahead and do your thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we were able to meet up with the land trust on December sixteenth. And the biggest question that, um, we've been kind of going back and forth with the board and the trust and. And, uh, the project is, is the cattle pass that we're proposing as connectivity to our project site. Uh, adequate to use as open space. Um, so we took a walk with, uh, the land trust. And we got a great day for it, so this is the area on the site that we were looking at. And just to zoom out, um, to refresh. So, the pass that we're talking about is up in this area up here. There's also another pass that's down here. So when we walked out there, we walked along the railroad tracks all the way up. And we came across the southern entrance first. Um, which is initially the one that, um. I believe the land trust and some of the others were thinking that this is probably the, the cattle pass, but there's multiple along the rail, which is, um. Is, uh, is nice. The first one that we went to had, uh, quite a steep drop off of it. Um, so, you know, this one, these are how it looked as far as height. There we go. So that's the first area that we had gone through, this is a southern one. Um, but again, this isn't the one that we wanted to look at. So this is a slope on the downward side outside of the, uh, the cattle pass. So I'm standing up on the rails, uh, the rail bed, and this is the top of the cattle pass and, and we, and is that Karen?
Yeah.
That was down there, um, is the elevation difference walking down to get to the pass. And this is the inside of the pass going from one side to the other. Uh, so you can see that the walls and everything are in, uh, fairly good shape, the rail was above it. Uh, we actually had a couple of trains go by while we were out there and while we were in them.
I didn't like that, by the way.
Full treatment lawyer.
So this is looking back from, um, from the other side, um, on the opposite side of the rail after we had walked through.
So what side, I'm, I'm sorry, can you go back to the first picture where you were looking down the, the slope? Um, well, I guess we can go here, which side is this on, is this on the eastern side or the western?
This is on the open space side, looking back.
Looking back over to the.
To the project side.
Okay, okay.
So, which, this is the time that we need to share.
Nope, this is not the one that needs the stairs. The southern one would need a set of stairs, it goes down, uh, drops probably about what, twenty feet, and then it's almost like a ravine.
I would say that southern one is, is an old culvert, it looks like it transported water, to tell you the truth. This one is the one that people walk, I mean, we walk out the end, you know, to walk outside, it's, it's really. And you guys can, can burn out, but this is the one that's the real cattle pass, the other one's just a box culvert.
And this is walking towards the open space on, so this is what you can see as you walk out, um. There's not a big drop, and probably about fifteen feet in front of us, uh, there was a chick, old chicken wire fence. That looks like it was the sides where the, um, the cattle would herd through, and they'd go to the left and they'd go to the right, but they couldn't go straight. Um, this way, they could guide them to the correct property. Um, so you would go to the left, uh, to reach the open, the open space for this project.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so it was a positive site visit, um, you know, as far as starting discussions. And, um, they still have their due diligence type of things, I did board the letter on to technically as well that we got today. Um, so there's some due diligence and research that they need to do on their side of things. Um, and we wanted to find out, uh, if the board had a chance to review any of the documents that we had sent over. That showed the pass and the deed, uh, since December, when we were last here.
The only other thing that I'd like to add to what Amanda said, and, and I think you guys are backing up on this. That piece of open space is actually a really, really nice piece of land, a nice piece of walking, you know, rocky trails and. Things like that, I think it would really add to the open space that the land trust has already, because they, they actually have it so. Where there's, I, I, you know, we can connect to it, you can get to it, you can walk to it and. And use it for open space activities, I think it would really enhance the project. To, to make that a useful experience.
So on the sketch that Lisa had sent over, the dot on the north of the page is this, is the. Looking towards the open space side on the left hand side of the page. And then like we said, the first one came, and the first one was about probably twenty foot drops. And this is the one that's referenced in the deed, and this is the one that's shown on our plans. Um, and that the railroad had, um. Transacted the property.
Now, is that, um, that open space section of this, of this plan to the west of the railroad tracks? Um, is it all upland or is it?
I would say it's pretty much all upland, it looks pretty nice, but I can't tell.
Given the amount of rain that we've had this fall, summer, winter.
Uh, relatively dry.
Relatively dry.
Okay.
Yeah, I walked around back there without sinking in the heat or anything.
Okay.
Yeah, but, um, we walked, he walked out this way onto our, what? The open space that they're, that we might have. But anyway, um, he walked out, out this way. And I walked down this way, and they were waiting for me, and I, I just climbed up the hill to the railroad tracks. Um, but it was, it was nice, it was great, um. And you, you walked out this way, this land that it abuts is actually Charlton Harris Preservation Trust. Fifty-seven acres that is, um, Cranberry Meadow.
Okay.
So it would add to the Cranberry Meadow, which you don't, there's an easement. That's next to the cemetery on Cranberry Meadow Road. Just before you get to Spencer, on the right-hand side, there's an old, old, really cool cemetery. Um, we met with the recreation and the, uh. Uh, cemetery committee, and there's. The fire department has a big pipe and can't really, can't get to our property. So this would be a way, I mean, you can, if, if you go. Between the trees or you go through the cemetery on town land and then ours, but there's not really any parking. So whether or not this all goes through, whatever you guys decide, um, but. They were talking about putting parking. Where's a dark green?
Yep.
Yeah. A little further up, Amanda. Yeah, if you come off the end of the culvert section, there's a parking, we need a fat park is right up above the lines.
Oh, way in the back?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would make our land more accessible. Which is fifty-seven, right?
No. And Cranberry Meadow is a nice mix of, of lowland and upland. So it's kind of cool, so, you know, you get ducks down in the pond and you can be up in the Naples. So. Thinking about the bigger recreational, potential for access.
And there's trails through Cranberry Meadow.
Not yet, not yet, if you wanna come help.
Um, what kind of work would need to be done to that north tunnel to get it easily accessible and?
Put nineteen twenty-one tunnel swap.
Yeah, that's a killer, yeah.
Okay.
And there was, there was water going through it.
Yeah, okay.
We got to the end and some of us didn't even go to the end, because it's like, I'm not looking down.
I was afraid I was gonna slip on. Yeah, but it was like mossy and it's.
You said the eighteen twenty, that's the year, right?
Yeah, eighteen eighty.
Eighteen eighty?
Yeah.
And that's the southern?
Northern.
No. Nineteen twenty-one.
Oh, was it, I, I didn't see it, yeah.
Are they stamped?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the, the dream would be having a trail that you could literally do them.
Yeah.
Like, people come from all over just to walk on the Route twenty.
Yes.
So.
On the midstate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this, this would be a great place to. Do a little agricultural history and get a walk-in.
Go into a train.
He's gonna have their time scheduled, this time.
Yeah, I can't make attention, they actually waved to us when they went by.
Good, great, great research, thank you for doing that and wanting it out.
Yeah.
And finding the needs of the research on that.
That's Lisa.
Yeah.
We just. I think I was telling you, I. I just like to do trails, I, I don't, we're here because Lisa couldn't.
So I think the big question was, can we use that for lockup? And I think with what Randy said, moves forward, we have to make sure that.
Yeah.
You guys are okay with that.
Well, it sounds like they're. From the, the heritage trusts is okay with it. They're gonna be good use of that property, so.
I feel more comfortable with that, that actual tile rather than that full, that photo, that box, that box cover view. Looks a little bit better.
I, I, I would like to see better access from the property, if there's some, some clearing that needs to be done for trails to get there, that's. When we develop it, absolutely, and make it, make it useful and allow it to be easily useful, I guess.
There'd have to be a provision for the highway department to access that. I've eaten the highway department, they're gonna be responsible for that extension base.
Put a intention base in.
Oh, in the back?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, there's.
Talking about where, you're talking about coming in.
For, for access.
Yeah, the, like my part dog, it has to be easier for the town to go in and maintain the intention base.
Yep, so we have a ten-foot wide access.
Yeah.
It would come off the end of the culvert and go to the back, so that, and then we have the access around it on.
Can, can we get parking for, for the trails we'll come into, so it's part of the?
Yeah. Yeah, but.
If we got where it can go.
Yeah, we had an issue. I don't know, it's probably hitting the open space C.
Yep.
Um, possibly, uh, we had another one where they were a lot of parking, they told us that the fire department, they were able to use that.
No, we were looking at, um, open space C that we can find some parking spaces for them to. To be able to access it, park up and not have to disrupt the traffic or fire safety access.
That was actually Lisa's suggestion, put it up there, yeah. It was actually Lisa's suggestion, put it up there, yeah.
The solar field portion of this property, I assume there's at least a twenty-year lease on that property now and?
Twenty years, yeah, and it's way, almost twenty sixteen, what are we, eight years in?
Yeah, okay. Um, so about, almost halfway through that, what's um, what's the plan for that section of the property?
Well, right now, at least at the con end or whatever.
With the leases up, what's the, the plan for it?
Well, my opinion is they're gonna put new panels in, which have become much more, much, much better than the ones that they have right now. And they're gonna look for it. They have extensions built into the lease, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
If they came back and said, no, we no longer want this piece of property, would that become open space or would that become?
Um, yeah, but I mean, we've put as much lots on the property as it can take with that or without it, so.
Yeah.
It's not gonna add any lots to it, so yeah, I would say.
That's, I mean, if we could just maybe deed that or put that in the agreement that that land after the use of, of solar becomes part of the open space or, or it's.
That would be fine. That's fine with me. It's just that I don't know that that's gonna be up twelve years.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's, that's fully understandable. Um, and, and yeah, and I was gonna say that I don't, we could get more houses in that.
No.
Anyway, so it, it doesn't seem like it's usable property, so like that being good open space for the town and the neighborhood. It's part for baseball, we'll put it against. It's not flat, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've never played on a?
Or is that all you guys heard?
So, there's that and we have a couple comments left on Graves's, but it's really the lockout.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure of put the lockout before we went forward because we didn't know where we understood, so.
Yeah.
You guys were okay with that, then we'll move on with Graves.
Yeah, there's nothing handful of comments left.
You're, you don't get your sewage into the property if you rearrange your lockout?
No, lots would, would fit septic systems or maybe find a sewer. I'm gonna talk to sewer department and Vando and, or, whatever they call, and I'll see if they'll go along with it, but if they don't, I'll just put septic sand in it. It's, I think it's a better project and better for the town, but with the sewer, but doesn't matter to me one way or the other, see, it'll be separate, so figure the sand that's gonna go in the wall.
Yeah.
And septic sand's gonna go in seventy-two lots, moving an awful lot of dirt, plus you gotta come up, you know, you gotta be what, thirty inches above uh, groundwater modeling? Or is it four feet, four feet above groundwater modeling, so.
Would that affect your grading? Would we have to go back to Graves to?
Nope, that, that would just, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be anything to do with the roads, it'd just be on the individual lots that would, that would matter.
It would be the board health plans or go through that.
All right. All right, do we have a motion? Because did I say it continues, right? To get your final lockout?
I'd say at least a month.
Yep, we're just about there. Um, road names, we go through, we start.
We gave you local.
Yep. Um, so highway with our for our road names. Uh.
No, that's too odd. Usually firing.
So we, we do have, we have names of the roads and they were included in a letter. We didn't add them to the plans again. You know, but we can add them to the set. Um, we had, we had four names. We had Road A was Bryce Circle, Road B was CD Circle, Road C was Kirsten Way, and Road D was Luca Circle.
Okay, so that's my son, my daughter-in-law, and my two grandkids.
They don't have roads in other towns by now, they?
Well, they do, my grandkids don't, because they, you know, eight, they're eight and five.
More grandkids, the more you have to build.
Yes, right. Nice.
So we have the road names, so we can add those to the, the plan set as well. Um. And.
If you place a file.
I think it's a combination of all, really, with the road.
Might just show the need of like the fire, the captain calls and just to run those by him, just as far. Because it's more or less when you call, you know, when you call it for emergency, doesn't get confused.
Yep.
With any other name in town. So, I don't think, right, right, based on these names, I don't think there's any real close to that.
Yeah.
Which section they also do.
Was the, yeah.
The same road changes names three times.
Oh, yeah, let's public, uh, top, yeah.
Yeah, the last thing is the community impact, and now that we have the lockout, we can finalize that.
That's supposed to be tried, but it was all one road at the time, one background.
Yeah.
February twenty-first.
Yeah, that's.
That good? Okay, we should be able to get it.
I'm in our, the thirty-one on that.
Yes, you know, like I said, there's only a handful of comments for Graves. Um, we'll shoot a email out to the fire department, uh, for the names, see if they have any issues with that, and then you and I can coordinate on sewer and community impact. You know, really the.
Make the motion to continue the Curtis Hill Estates to February twenty-first. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, it's an animal. Sorry, thank you very much.
So we're good on the lockout?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank everybody.
Thank you guys for coming and providing information. Awesome. Thanks for doing the site visit as well.
Oh, that was, that was beautiful.
Yeah, that actually really moved on really quick.
It was a beautiful day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and trying to know.
That was a nice day. I'm sorry I missed it. That was a good hiking day, and other plans.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we have a request for approval for a decommission bond for Sturbridge Road Solar Farm LLC, North Sturbridge Road Solar Facility.
Is it, they have to then, it's submitted till we were able to, uh, speak at the last, um, planning board meeting, so yeah, they put coming and speaking nicely if they can, so, to figure out some of the issues with uh, decommission bond and, in the way, they did it today, they sent it over to the planning boards.
All right.
Uh, I'd send over a sort of a summary of what my presentation this evening is gonna be.
Yeah.
My voice is a little raw from uh, from whatever. Um, my name's Chris Nolan, I'm from Park Corporation. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Um, we're the applicant, uh, we're the consultant for the applicant, Sturbridge Road Solar Farm LLC. Uh, in October, we submitted a request for approval of the decommissioning bond. The board first heard that request in December twenty twenty-three. Uh, I attended remotely, uh, but was unable to be heard because I could not get my phone to unmute. Um, I was quite frustrated by that and only subsequently to the meeting discovered that was because I was in safe driving mode on my phone. So it would not let me unmute and speak into my phone. Um, I do appreciate the board's willingness to uh, to hear me again uh, on this subject, and I'll try to be as free as I can. We do believe that the amount that we have proposed as bond, uh, and the, and the form of the bond that we have proposed at two hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars is appropriate uh, for the, for the following reasons. Um, first, the site plan approval condition uh, specifically sti- uh, sets forth a process that's gonna be set forth to determine the amount of the bond. I'll quote, "Planning board notes that a disas- disassembly performance guarantee in an amount equal to the cost of removal of the ground mounted solar array and the premises is required for this project." Emphasis, "in an amount to be reviewed and recommended by Graves Engineering Inc." Prior to the issuance of either a temporary or permit certificate of occupancy or operation, said performance guarantee shall be reviewed and accepted by the planning board at duly posted planning board meeting. We believe that's controlling here, uh, and that Graves Engineering, on November nineteenth, twenty twenty, Graves indicated that they proposed bond amount of two hundred thousand dollars, which are noted substantially lower than the amount, ten percent lower than the amount, or we added ten percent to that. Um, uh, that is, you noted that that value was consistent in G I's experience with solar facilities without battery storage systems. This does not have a battery storage system. Because on that basis that I submitted the request, and frankly, it was on that basis that I, I attended remotely because I didn't anticipate. So I was not aware of the fact that the board had uh, accepted a initial decommissioned bond policy subsequent to the site plan approval. Um, I did hear the discussion, so I understand the board wanted to apply that policy. We suggest that that policy is not applicable for several reasons. First, the policy itself states it will apply to all new facilities and any site modifications to existing facilities. The only modifications that have occurred since two thousand and eighteen have been field change modifications, which we don't believe uh, constitute any significant site modification sufficient to kick in uh, something like this. Certainly, the board has not found it sufficient for any of the field modifications to have a public, public hearing on it. They've simply approved them uh, as recommended by Graves Engineering. Second reason we don't, we believe that it doesn't apply is because regardless of that policy, the site plan approval, paragraph seven, establishes the manner in which the plan is gonna be approved. Um, the language speaks for itself. I don't think that the board can, uh, as a matter of fact, I'm quite sure that the board cannot adopt the policy subsequent to a site plan approval that changes the terms of that site plan approval unless there's a substantial modification to the site plans. Um, third, the actual zoning ordinance at issue, um, and this is the current zoning, zoning ordinance. I don't even think this is the one that was in effect at the time, but this one's stricter. Uh, specifically states that we shall provide a form of surety through a cash deposit bond or standby letter of credit. We are in reliance on that and in reliance on the board's uh, uh, site plan approval. We obtained a bond from a reputable company uh, in the amount of tw- two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. We've submitted that bond to the board, and we would suggest that that bond is appropriate, the form is appropriate, and that the board is uh, the board is required to approve it. We did provide, when we did our decommissioning plan, as you can see, I've attached a copy to our request. Uh, Graves Engineering went through it in detail. Uh, you can see their notes uh, on the plan. Um, in the end, forty dollars uh, per megawatt is appropriate in their opinion. Uh, finally, from a legal standpoint, I've been asked to state that uh, it would constitute an unreasonable impediment to permitting and constructing solar facilities in contravention of the State Zoning Act, General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Sections three and nine, specifically providing that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably reg- unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building instructors that facilitate the collection of solar energy except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. A decommissioning bond in amount triple what the town's own peer review engineer has stated is consistent with similar solar projects elsewhere in the Commonwealth would constitute an impermissible and unreasonable regulation of solar systems under state law. Appreciate the opportunity to present this material to the board, and we respectfully request that you approve the form of the amount of the bond as we, as we submitted. Thank you very much for hearing the folks.
Thanks, Chris. I've given any comment, I, you can see the applicant point, as far as that, just like I compared to uh, if told at the fire department, then when, after your permit got approved, would their code changes? The, when they, they're on final inspection, they wanna pull the new code to you. Just throwing that out there, as far as, their, their approval wasn't from twenty eighteen.
Right.
And we have a policy that we adapt in twenty twenty to try and adopt that twenty twenty policy to a approval from twenty eighteen.
In the case like you said before, will they try to hold you?
Yeah.
Can they? Do they?
No, I guess, from what?
Oh, no, I mean.
Yeah.
Have you ever run up?
No. No, but I, from the applicant's point of view, I think that's what he feels.
Right.
Kind of feels like he's getting here with this, come, when it comes to the bond. As far as, we're applying a policy that was adopted in twenty twenty, their approval was from twenty eighteen.
So it's trying to.
Go right ahead.
Policy, the adopted project, right, to, to move forward. But the only issue is the five-year review that the policy says that between doing application. You know, decommission bond, excuse me.
Yeah.
So, it's whether that really applies in this case or.
Cause that was not a policy. Yeah, but the, the timing was important through the.
You go right ahead, yeah.
And I appreciate suggestion of Mr. Nolan, the, the evidence presented. Um, but our decommissioning policy was uh, documented in July of twenty twenty. Uh, Graves Engineering adopted their proposed bond amount after our decommissioning bond policy. So they, I mean Graves, we rely on them to do the peer review. They obviously knew of the decommissioning policy at that point. It was, it's simply a miscalculation on their part. Our, our policy, it's very clear, it's a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt. This is uh, six point seven four megawatts DC, it's six hundred seventy-four thousand dollars of a a surety bond. It's, it's pretty clear in the policy that we adopted in July and Graves didn't do the peer review, they did the peer review after our policy was, was in action.
Um, with words permission, could I respond to that?
Yeah, go right ahead, Chris.
Um, I think that's, that probably supports my position that Graves viewed the policy the same way we do, which is applied to new pol- new projects, and it doesn't apply to this project. I think that absolutely supports exactly what we've been saying here.
But they waited, you know, that, we have to have the decommissioning bond in place before there's any occupancy or site work done.
I, I just, I disagree with, with that, I, I understand that, that, that approach, but I disagree with that because it's not a new project, and it's not a new site plan approval. Again, you gotta remember that as a developer, we rely upon a site plan approval and the things that are in a site plan approval to build a project. When a town changes that, subsequent to that, that becomes very, it becomes very problematic to be able to, to plan a project and to do a project. And I understand that solar projects aren't, you know, maybe viewed a little bit differently, but in the bigger picture, you need to have consistency in how this stuff is approached, and you cannot change the rules on a site plan approval after the fact.
But I appreciate that, that suggestion, Mr. Nolan, but uh, our policy was enacted in July of twenty twenty, Graves didn't even start to calculate their proposed bond amount, so you had the approval for the site plan without any calculation of a decommissioning policy at the time of site plan approval. And so, subsequent to that, years later, two years later only did Graves Engineering calculated decommissioning bond amount, and they just miscalculated because we already had a decommissioning bond policy at that point. It's a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt.
And, and I'm assuming if Graves had come through with a hundred thousand dollars at a megawatt, this would, conversation wouldn't be going on right now, because there was no.
Prior to that.
There was no policy. It's, it's, it's correct, but I think again, Graves recognized that the policy didn't apply to this one, and that's why he applied it that way. The other thing that I'll point out is that, that he had reviewed it several times, including if you look at the actual decommissioning plan that was submitted.
Hmm.
I believe it's originally dated July twenty twenty and then revised in September twenty twenty. So this was an ongoing process that we had going on. Secondly, the site plan approval and the zoning ordinance at the time did not use the building permit as the trigger. It used the certificate of occupancy or the temporary certificate of occupancy as the trigger, which also makes a big difference here. Because we didn't have to have anything done until then. It doesn't change the terms of the site plan approval. And to suggest that you can change the terms of the site plan approval up until we take a step that the site plan approval anticipates us taking at any given time, I think is, is inappropriate and, and results in bad planning.
Well, then Graves Engineering should have come up with a uh, a proposed amount for decommissioning upon the site plan application at that point, too, in November of twenty eighteen. That is, that's an entire big miss in the site plan application.
What they were asked to do. That just wasn't the way the process worked then. And again, we have an approval from them, that we're, we're building the project now, the project's being built.
So you acknowledge that Graves did come up with a decommissioning bond amount in twenty twenty. Why did they, why did they put a bond, a decommissioning bond amount in there at all?
Yeah.
The town had no decommissioning bond policy because they recognized that the town just instituted a brand-new decommissioning policy. And that's why they calculated it and put it into their notes.
All right, so just to, to limit the back and forward here, I think you should get a legal opinion from our attorney on this, because my personal opinion is I think that we would lose in court on this, only because when the site plan approval was, and then when I pause you into effect. And correct me if I'm wrong, you guys were delayed significantly because of National Grid, correct?
Correct. They had a, like a hundred month uh, build-out period for that. And then we have a whole issue down, which is actually in the town's Sturbridge, uh, along the transmission route. Because I don't know if you're familiar with that exact part of town, but if you go down North Sturbridge Road, if you make a left, there's a dead-end Potomac Road. There's a short piece of Potomac Road before, it, it deadends before forty-nine. That's the transmission route. And then we decided, oh gee, this isn't an active road. We can't do it. We're gonna pull out of the project. So we've been fighting with them for two years. We've finally gotten them to a place where we now have a crossing over forty-nine and we're down Potomac Road. We've really put a lot of work into this project.
I just want to make sure that we don't, if it goes to court and I don't want to waste taxpayer pay money. I just want to be sure what we have, because it is a policy. That we have and we have an applicant that here has a, a proof site plan and it just, I just don't, I just want to see.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to have that.
Just if they, if everyone on the board is in agreement, I'm just throwing it out there just to try and make sure that we're, we're proceeding in the proper direction.
My response to that, it's not, we're not challenging the site plan approval at all. There, it's just a miscalculation. It's not an egregious amount. They're already recognizing that the bond has to be paid, then they just miscalc.
I think it's more or less when the policy went into effect and then when the site, that's the, that's the thing that we want to make sure that we are making the proper decision on as far as the timing. Meaning you have a site plan approval at one date, a policy that was enacted by the board at another day. Does, does it go back to that site plan approval or is it, or does it just stay with what the prior? With, with no policy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with Bill. There was no policy. That calculation was just narrowed down to make sure that we, we get the proper amount for, for decommissioning and, and whatnot. Um, it has nothing to do with the site plan application review. I think it's more of a, a, a decommissioning things and places change all the time. So.
Yeah.
I don't think Graves took in the, the right account, but yeah, as far as what you say, I think. If you run it by council and, and see what their legal opinion is, I.
Am I doing that?
No, I, I do get um.
And what's, what's the, that's which office will go to?
It might be a.
Yeah, what, what, what time, what office?
Okay, um, do the fact, just to give them enough time to review it. Are you willing to wait till uh, February twenty-first meeting, which is back on the agenda?
Certainly.
Once we get a legal opinion from our.
Sure, no, I understand.
I can share with you.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll go from there.
Just has to happen before uh, the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, I know you're gonna waste the go so long.
The moment. Uh, one question, can we submit um, uh, like some proposed questions? That you can then review and then decide whether those are the questions you want to submit to your council, so, so that I can sort of sharpen the issues to what we think the issues are.
I'll share whatever you want to share.
Okay, we'll submit something by the end of the week.
Yeah.
What about you, this, this letter and, and your presentation?
That's, that's, that's pretty good. I could probably sharpen the questions slightly more, but.
Yeah, I'll probably have to buy the engineer, like the engineer who worked in.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna submit it to an attorney, I'm gonna ask an attorney how to phrase the questions. I think that's just. They speak a different language and I'd like them to start by speaking the same language at the beginning instead of picking up. As, as they go along and meeting interpretation from me on what, you know, what I submitted and that kind of material. Thank you. Representative.
All right, and then we have a question from a.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions and some reminders of what we went over the last time we met about this decommissioning bond. The site plan does not freeze the cost of a bond. Uh, you approved the site plan years ago, but as you know, costs keep going. So bonds should also increase. And this is the same project that went from five megawatts up to six point seven four megawatts. Which is a significant site plan change. It added eighteen thousand panels from what I reviewed in your office. So that is another expense. And this company is the largest renewable energy firm in the world, according to their website. And they own Florida Light and Power. I would like to think that their bond would include disposal amounts and not just removal. Um, so again, the site plan has nothing to do with the bonds. The state allows bonds, towns to set bond amounts. That they feel are sufficient to protect us. Um, and this is the amount that we decided protects us. I don't think it comes down to a date or not. Um, they did add a significant amount to it, so I hope everyone remembers that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Laura. Thank you, Laura.
That's a good, just to close this out, great, great point. Um, the bond policy in fact says we have a five-year review period. The planning board has the authority to increase or decrease bond amounts under inflation technology and all of that. So if the, if the date uh, that you want to consider for this is two thousand and eighteen, right, for the bond. That should regulate the bond, uh, decommissioning amount, then the review should be five years after all.
Uh, we disagreed with that interpretation because the original uh, site plan approval um, specifically said that the presentation that we made, which we made in accordance with the, with the uh, site plan approval. Um, should have a factor for inflation. We calculated inflation for the entire period as required. That factor of inflation was included in the two hundred and twenty-one thousand. The two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars was not applied to your bond. It was a twenty-year bond.
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate your opportunity to give me to respond to your, to your questions, sir. I do appreciate that.
All right, we have, we're gonna, uh, approve to uh.
Make a motion to continue?
Yeah. Uh, February twenty-first for the uh, decommissioned bond, Sturbridge Road Farm LLC, North Sturbridge Solar Facility.
Uh, make a motion to continue the solar field for North Sturbridge Road, also known as Loner Meadows, to February seventeen?
Our second then?
Hold us in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Chris. Thank you, members.
Yeah.
Thank you, my folks.
Good night. All right, next up, we have a public hearing zoning map amendment under chapter forty-eight, section five. To consider amending land abutting Route twenty-three ninety-nine Worcester Road and eighteen Oxford Road identified as tax map thirty-eight A three and three point one. The parcels are currently split zone with a portion of lots on Route twenty being zone community business and a portion of lots on Oxford being considered agricultural. The applicant is requesting deposits to rezone the entire parcel to community business. Pursuant to master and law chapter forty-eight, section five, the Cheltenham Plan Board will hold a remote public hearing via Zoom meeting. Meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven and in person at thirty-seven Main Street, Cheltenham, Mass. One five oh seven on Wednesday, January seventh, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, seven thirty PM. On request of Ron Royer, period box four three three, Cheltenham, Mass. One five oh seven. To consider amending Cheltenham zoning map for land abutting Route twenty-three ninety-nine Worcester Road and eighteen Oxford Road herein identified as tax map thirty-eight block A lots. Three point one, the parcels are currently split zone with the portions of lots on Route twenty being zone community business and the portions of lots on Oxford will be agricultural. The applicant has requested the parcels are zone, so the entire parcels to the community business as detailed on the submitted proposed zoning map. The size, the combination of both parcels is approximately one hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three square feet. This meeting of the Cheltenham Plan Board will be conducted in person by remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public in our parties. That they write and are required to attend this meeting can be found on the town's Cheltenham website. www.cheltenham.net for those meeting members of the public who wish to listen. Or watch the meeting, may please, in the following manner, video participation, HTTPS colon. Backslash, backslash Zoom, the US backslash two one one two nine three two two five seven. Meeting, meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven, phone access one six four six five five eight, three six five six. The complete tax map of the proposed zoning map amendment is available for inspection of Cheltenham Plan Board Office. The town courts office during regular business hours. Our applications also posted on the town website. And the planning board, any person interested, which may be heard, should appear at the time and place designated. Uh, raised.
Lauren, you was representing there and they don't know where this is, so I don't know.
Is there anybody here to represent?
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll just give you a brief overview of what they want to do. Um, and then I'll go to the next part of it. So the people, they have property there. It's, it's two different properties, but they've also been doing a bylaw revision where the community business line starts. In, you know, in from portion of the property, they basically want to make the whole lot community business.
So it's a black dotted line on this map by McCaw?
That, yeah, that's the existing. Again, that red, the red areas were, instead of just a portion of the, the complete lot should be rezoned to community business. Um, so this leads to a bigger thing. If you look at the second map that we have. Uh, this map was when we had the uh, application for Jackson Motors. That it made sense for all these lots along the street twenty corridor, they're all split zone here and. Uh, majority of whom, with the exception of maybe. One or two residential homes are all commercial properties and they're all split zone where see first two hundred feet along. Uh, Route twenty is commercial, and then the back portion of property is agricultural. Um, this application, you know, is a standalone application, but the planning board might really want. We had discussed after admitting the bylaws. Uh, for all of these lots in the same area. We did it for Jackson Motors and now the people at the other end of this. You know, same area, oh, requesting the zoning change, so it might make sense at this time. If the board wants to consider it, you get bylaws, we can. Our map would be huge and the, the whole area between these two.
Which would be that white line all the way.
Yeah, the, the white line would basically be, it's following the property lines. You know, so that all of these lots along the Route twenty corridor, the gap between the business versus the other. In the front portion of them. It just makes it easier for the property owners. It makes it so, you know, someone comes to an application, guess who that zoning boundary line is. Leads up and strings, makes it a much simpler process for everyone.
What's happening on the west, in the east, how many?
Um, that side has a lot more residential on it.
Yeah.
And uh.
So you get that line cut into everything again.
That's, yeah, that one's probably gonna be a little more. Uh, controversial because there's a lot of existing homes on that side of the road. So we're kind of looking at and addressing the commercial properties that are on the westbound side.
Yeah, as I say, the southern side of Route twenty, it's, it's mostly residential lots. Anything that has frontage along Route twenty is still completely all commercial, right?
Yes.
Anything with frontage on Route twenty is commercial on the whole property. But that's not the case on the north side.
Yes, the, the boundary line actually goes through the backs, so you need.
The frontage, I mean, is all, so the whole lot.
Yeah.
With the exception of maybe a couple of small, like a section here.
Right.
But uh, the moving out here is. The exception of this one, but still that's. Something they could petition, but it's, it's far likely off to do what they need to do.
Correct, exactly.
More than enough. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with that change for the north side. In concept, I think there's might be some, some questions I have, but in concept, that makes sense. What about that corner on Oxford and I said, we're off the subject a little bit, but.
Yeah.
About that corner, that complete corner on Oxford and, and Hammond Hill?
Um, we, I believe it's, it's uh, the, the one, the corner is.
Well, yeah, actually I see the new one that goes across that, all right.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, when you include the all granite place as well as the uh, I believe, see. Um, the reading store on the corner there.
Yeah. No, that wasn't.
So we, we were going as far as, basically. But both models go as far as the all gray. So he's shopping there for now. Um, it's, it's hard to do like the full length, you have to, portions of twenties are different, so. But this, this, bringing section twenty is primarily all commercial. And actually, when we looked at it before, we were concerned about uh, this, this, this property here. Um, because it is residential, but, but the property now making the first to make it commercial as well. Obviously, and not. Who may have an issue with the map change if we give the whole board or Caesar will be questioning that map change.
This is probably that place.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
That goes up to there. That's the uh, maybe that's where they made that, that's where they give up. They call the, and they're making it a time. Cut and polish, yeah. Let me see the backside of him, what's?
Yep, and then this is their.
Correct.
Uh, this is, this is the backside of him.
Okay.
All right, since there's no one here to present this. Uh, a map change, and I'm, do you have a motion to continue to um? February seventh? At seven thirty?
For the chair, go right ahead. Would you have to get a letter out to all the landlord holders that are proposing this change, uh, change in the zone?
Um, we would for the, yeah, we, we, that has to do with second public hearing for all the lots. We're gonna do the whole Route twenty corridor. Is this application's been noticed only for these two processes alone? So we would have to, I attach, you know, do the same public hearing for the planning board. For the balanced process, yes, the property is, you know, this, we had to go through the formal process. We can't just feed you back on, to their, you know, map change. You're appearing to stall the property on that corridor.
You think it's easy to do it section by time or the whole thing?
Well, it'd be easy to do the whole thing at once, but uh, um, it's, you know, the applicant's application and I could reach out to McCord and see. You know, how they heal, how we do, the bylaw, uh, map revision for the whole thing in one shot rather than that two separate applications for. That particular area, if the applicant's willing to do that.
That was the applicant that probably said, you know. Just because uh, it takes a lot.
Together.
Yeah, it takes a lot more time, a lot more risk than what they want to do.
The planning board's not in any like time constraint, so we could do the balance with that fall town meeting.
We could do two, I mean, if we want to look at it, I guess we could do two, two articles.
Yeah.
Like, I.
If they, if their property is rezoned.
And I think what I'm looking for is just consistency, because this is just gonna open up a can of worms with. They're going to zones here.
Well, so we, we can just wait for now and just do the application that's been presented to us. For the map change for the two properties you questioned, and then. Is that what you're suggesting and then do another one later? There's no reason why we can't be.
So they.
Yeah, we don't want to. We don't want to do this long for their application.
And misunderstanding. Of course, you know, this is our rules of doing that. This is the way we just had it, and the property line by.
Yeah, and actually, it's probably easy in the long run that if they do that and go down to the other end, they're Jackson Motors.
Yeah.
It further justifies why the, so, because that changed for the whole area.
Is the motion to continue?
Yes, all right, go on a second.
Second.
All right, hold us in favor.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, Janice. All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing, but ESA proposed zoning by law amendment to add a utility scale over five megawatt battery energy storage system over a district.
Good evening, that is us. Good evening, I'm Wes Schaefer, planner with ESA. Um, I'm joined by.
Um, I'm joined by Javier, one of the owners of ESA and and my mentor, I appreciate you.
I don't know about that.
Randy, if if um if need be, I do have my, I've I've joined the Zoom, I'm happy to share my screen and. If any questions arise that require more visuals or anything like that, but it's no worries otherwise. In the previous meeting in January fourth, I presented a pre presentation, pre fish presentation. Outlining kind of the the strategy and the intent intent of this overlay districts. And I can give you just a very brief summary, essentially, the the notion is um. That we want to introduce a safe and responsible overlay district to Charlton centered around substations. And integrated with what we're calling the high voltage visual corridor, essentially the the transmission line area that goes through the town. Um, and we think that that's an appropriate location for what we're calling grid scale battery storage, essentially storage and it's. Greater than five megawatts. Uh, I think. We seem to, we gathered a few questions, um, I think we're here tonight to answer any additional questions that the board may have. In the time since we have met, we sat down with Captain Carlson. Um, and he provided us provided us with uh I think some positive feedback, essentially. Um, there were some tweaks just to make sure that we're referencing the National Fire Code properly um. And and we also widened the service access road requirements from eighteen to twenty feet. Uh, for emergency access, but otherwise uh no major changes were recommended or suggested by Captain Carlson. They were not, yes, he does not, he he's he has not rubber stamped this project, he doesn't say that he approves it or disapproves it. He did provide valuable feedback.
You said earlier that Captain Carlson would provide us something inviting.
Yeah.
He's asking his concerns in this conversation with you.
Correct, and everything that he requested of us, we've incorporated into. Not the document before you, because I printed that back in early January, but in in the digital version, which I'm happy to pull up and and reference.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
That'd be great.
Well, you're bringing that up, are you familiar with our battery storage decommissioning?
Bond?
Bond?
No.
We want you to be aware of that, so we don't enter problems later.
I think that's definitely a good part, that would be a good thing to discuss tonight.
So do we, we we had talked about changing it.
Yeah.
Because we still think that better, what's it?
Changing it for the better?
Of course. To better protect the town. Good, so you know.
So this is the current language as it pertains to the bonds. Uh, prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide a form surety through a cash deposit bond or standby letter of credit. The applicant shall submit a fully inclusive estimate prepared by professional engineer. This assessment shall include. The costs associated with removal and disposal of materials, including fluids, hazards, materials, without including any potential salvage and recycling estimates. The planning board and town treasurer shall accept the form and amount of purity, purity shall include an escalator. For calculating increased removal cost to inflation.
Can can I comment? Um, so in the in the past, we've had wide ranges of of decommissioning bond proposals from several. Solar and 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 they've ranged dramatically from the research that we've done for actual costs and things like that, so we. Have a policy that we go by that has been ruled, uh, you know, legal and and approved and. Uh, whatnot, so it's it's to better assure the town. Is not stuck with these batteries or or the catastrophe that that people, so it's there just so that you're aware.
And would your preference be to reference that or or include that by reference, like include that policy?
That policy by reference in the the bylaw, I think.
I think there is lots of work being done at the state level and federal, so we always suggest. And we know about bonding and we do bond all our projects, we don't like it, because obviously it's a cost. But uh, there is lots of um uh benchmarking around it and with. Uh, the safety policies and all the updated uh legislation that comes into place. It's always uh there is always consequences and some of them are there. The updated pricing on the decommissioning bonds and whatnot, so. We will be open to any suggestion or any third parties or any state. Uh, the rules or references that we might. Not the state, it's us.
Right?
Right, right, but most of the time, what the township do is. They 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 seek help to the county or to the state, because they have studies done or they have references. But again, we are open if you guys.
Yeah. So just one point of clarity, um. Forgive me for not knowing the policy in depth, is there pricing specific to uh batteries in terms of. Just based on the math of megawatts is usually. Per megawatt of power or energy? So basically capacity to store it, store or capacity to send power to the grid?
Capacity to a bar.
There was capacity as well, yeah, I think storage capacity.
A hundred thousand per megawatt?
And we might have seen, we've seen higher, I've seen as high as four hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, our town is. We've been challenged already on this, and the town was successful.
Yeah, no, I I won't argue.
You know.
Yeah.
The state hasn't set any mandates on what they, you know, it is, because a lot of people put this, it not. So much batteries, but uh so feels in general about how much recycling there is, and it keeps coming up. More and more and more that it's not recyclable.
Right.
You know, vast portion for solar panel and everything, so but William Joe's won't take it anymore. That's the, you know, and batteries, of course, even more so.
Okay, so.
So wait, before you say that, just to make sure I'm clear, so for instance, with. The current limit to power, you know, five 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 megawatts, are we saying that that would be five hundred thousand? Okay, so in our case, you know, so that would be power. Rather than energy, power capacity. Which are you times one hundred fifty?
I I'm gonna give them all the calculation, so they know what the range is.
Okay, so yeah, so that would be times one hundred thousand.
Well, no, um, he said that it's been benchmarked at four hundred thousand per million, and that will be sixty million. So that will be like twenty five percent of the project cost, so I think that's a little steep, but uh there is a difference.
No, I have RLC a hundred.
Right, so then a hundred will be four times less, so that will be. Something like seven percent of the project cost, which I still think is a little. Steep is fifty million, but I will say that the difference between the storage and panels is that panels you go. Now you guys have a big project, but you go up to five megawatts and you have to go through a thirty acre, forty acre parcel and take all the panels and leave one with us. The uh. The storage is just containers, so you basically take a container out. And that's it, there's no like installation difficulties or deinstallation difficulties, it's just picking up a container. And truck it, but I'm I'm glad to provide references, like public references. Or if you guys want to do that, I can, or if you guys are stuck with a hundred thousand even for batteries. Then I can go to the bond agent and see what they think or what is the bonding average or we can discuss it again.
We, yeah, we we see from the N- National Renewable Energy Lab has decommissioning best practices report. Up to four hundred thousand.
Is that for the storage or for packs? For storage.
Interesting.
Yes.
And do you act adjust to inflation and to pricing, because in twenty twenty one, pricing was very different than. Thirty twenty two and thirty twenty three, and prices now are half what they used to be last year.
Yeah, the the for lithium phosphorus uh batteries, the price has essentially dropped.
But probably not for recycling. The price of recycling, that's probably going up.
That's a good point.
It's not the cost.
The cost of demand dismantling transportation, because you can't dispose of Massachusetts. I think there's only one or two places in the country that can be disposed in the route way. So with the Charlton, if Charlton gets stuck with it. Not only do we have to pay for the dismantling of the project, it's paid for the transportation has disposal of. The batteries, you know, to wherever that soon may be.
Like, it's just not the batteries, you know. Consider the winter infrastructure underneath, there's the climate, there's the wires, there's the light, there's the. Just not the batteries, that just leave the site, they're immediate at site. And God forbid if there's any soil that's contaminated or used and that's found, so a hundred thousand is is.
And the town has paid prevailing wage.
And prices to the to the rarity's point, to remediate anything, it's always going. And that's why we have a five year review policy on that bond too, so.
I I. Yeah, I don't want to talk that much because I don't talk on every day. Yeah, what I would do is talk to the bonding agent, talk to the bonding agent here, so we have numbers that belong to Massachusetts and not. Abidats from the country and we have a uh safety expert that we talk. Uh, pretty often and he will give us a little bit of advice, if we find something interesting, then we will share it with most.
Good, good place to start, so uh in addition to bonding. Really, that's the only, there were questions, I think, from someone in the the public about noise. Um, there are some provisions in here on knowing. We talked a little bit about the revenue share assessment that we're introducing to this. Um, in terms of what Captain Carlson requested that we change, it's it's essentially at the very beginning. Just making sure that we're very clear about referencing NFPA eight fifty five upfront. It was kind of buried into the text before, now it's upfront as one of the general requirements in addition to meeting Massachusetts companies fire code.
Does that also pick up underwriter laboratory certified?
Right, yeah, there's a section. And I can put that in, there's a section on safety, which includes various systems sort of requirements.
That's separate than the fifty five, it's just a U L certification out there.
Yeah, basically, this will have, these products will have to be certified with fire insulation, yeah.
Certified on site after installation.
Yeah, because what they, the idea is that that specific install needs to be A B S every once. What we talked to Captain Carlson was. That we have a hundred feet of setbacks between the project area and where the batteries are. And what we discussed was that we can increase the distance between the batteries and the fence. So then there is like a fifty feet setback, so you can go with a truck inside and outside the fence and a steel ridge. In case of fire.
Yeah, essentially, all we changed with that, we just made sure we added the term from combustible structures and. This is a requirement by NFPA to be considered what's called a remote site, um, and we intend that any. Projects, even if for whatever reason, we're not the developer, any projects that fall into this overlay must qualify as a remote site, and that's just.
Yeah, and this isn't say the actual battery, not the fencing area necessarily.
Right, right, the fencing could still be at the perimeter of the site, but that nothing between. Nothing within a hundred feet of a battery that exists.
Yeah, Captain Carlson bring up the requirement for. Your emergency responders to stay on site if there is any kind of an incident, the fire department may put out the fire. But it takes a long time to actually put it out, or it may recycle, it's we start on fire, so. We're not gonna tie up our Charlton Fire Department to do that and wait a week until the fire's out. We would, you know, require your emergency responders to stay there, notify the fire department if something happened.
First requirement was uh the communication protocol. Uh, so batteries work within the the second, so then have a safety protocol where. The same thing that we are seeing, twenty four seven monitoring can be accessed by the fire department, so basically there is an alarm, the alarm is system.
Yeah.
So that's the first step. Second step is, what we discussed was. Apart from moving the fence, so we can access outside the fence and inside the fence. Then we move all the EMS, the monitoring system outside the fence, so that way there is a fire, which. Again, the fire uh numbers for the manufacturing that we are working with is zero. But I understand that there is lots of conversations about fires and lots of uh uh things related to that, so but. Uh, second thing is, um, if there is a fire, then you are still monitoring what's happening. Because the idea is not to have to touch anything, just call the representative, the representative will follow the protocol, so that way the fire department doesn't have to put the fire out. So so then if you take the monitoring now, then whether it's a fire or not, you still have the sensor, the suppressant. And everything else that puts the fire out automatically. Doing what they are supposed to.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you, Javier, and I'm just saying, if there's a fire and there is equipment on site from Charlton and. Uh, these things can take a week to put out, it depends on the size of the enclosure, but uh it wouldn't tie up the Charlton. To stay on site after the fire, but to wait to make sure all the energies dispatched from that unit. It would be your responders, your emergency responders, not remotely, but physically on site with your equipment. Just to monitor and stay there and notify us if there's a flare back of a fire situation.
Yeah, and I.
Not the Charlton Fire Department sitting there for a week, but your responders.
We didn't talk specifically about that scenario, what we did talk about is that this code requires that we. Approve an emergency response plan prior to special use member approval and that that plan. Specify those kind of details.
But we will actually add that as a requirement for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is that something you want in the code?
Uh, I would put it right in the code, yeah, that that's part of, but maybe a section in the emergency responses, if there's an incident, you know. You have. The order of the facility has some kind of emergency response, I will stay with the enforcement. Should that be part of the zoning bylaw or should that be part of the site plan? This is just a zoning bylaw.
And is there, is there a such?
It can be a special.
Yeah, it's a special permit, okay, okay, yeah, maybe. Different. Piece of language.
And is there such a company that has its own fire, private fire trucks?
No, just an emergency response vehicle somewhere that can get into our fire.
Oh, because my guess was you have thought that like the towns by the problem, doesn't it, doesn't require to stay there to monitor, make sure it stays out?
He said he doesn't want that, he wants them to provide a person personnel to monitor the site. The quality pulls down, if there's a flare up, then they, so the Charlton guys don't have to stay there.
So wouldn't you always have a fire truck there, if it does flare up to put it down, and then it leaves once it's done?
Well, they're gonna let it burn anyways, you're gonna put it down, is that what?
Yeah, all right, so I mean, is it even a moot point, do you put that in there?
I'm I'm wondering if that's better, also better for a site plan, yeah, but a special permit, that's a special.
Let's do, you put any thought into putting some type of. Underground, any type of uh soil separation to capture any of the. Thing, if you do have a fire, whatever chemicals are put out or used to put this chemical, this whatever reactions happen. To possibly that stuff will reach through the the ground. Is there a mem- thought of a membrane to contain the system in order to not let this. Any byproducts penetrate, which I think is the problem, the number one thing that can screw this whole thing up. The fire is a fire, explodes, it burns, it's what happens after, which is the runoff. A fire is a fire, explodes, it burns, that's what happens after, which is the runoff and the contamination level. We've had problems, well, we do have a tremendous problem with soil contamination in this town as it is now. Um, I don't know if you put any thought about any type of barrier that can prevent that or slow it down.
So normally what you do is the same thing that you do in um, uh, when you have transformers, where what you do is you do a compressed lab and the slab needs to be offset by a buildout and that buildout, the volume of that buildout is the same as the amount of oil. So then that way, if there is anything, everything is contained by volume, it can take it. But I will say that there is no liquid, there is no liquid in the batteries, even if they burn. But I, we can certainly do that, like do a lab and make sure that this lab.
Yeah, I would think it would be more what the fire department is.
Yeah, they need some type of foam or whatever.
So one thing I'd like to.
Unless, unless it's water.
Right.
That whole thing's changed over the.
It has, yeah, so. That's, that's really the, the what, and, and it sounds flippant to say let it burn as a strategy. But that's really the way that this code is currently designed. That's the core solution. That, that's, that's the foundational solution to a thermal runaway event that's being conceived for this particular area. So I mentioned the hundred feet, that qualifies our project under NFBA or our all projects that would be in this overlay to be considered a remote site. And as a remote site, you don't work, it's, it's not required that you use fire suppressant to manage a fire. It's, it's when batteries are close to other structures that by law or by NFBA standards, you have to suppress it. We want to move totally away from suppression, at least. And you know, it's kind of like, I, I just had a baby a year ago and it's like, you put them on their back or on their front, it seems to change all the time. And maybe that's the same with.
On the side.
Yeah, on the side, you're good. Uh, sometimes I wonder, it just keeps going, but I think what we want to present to you is what we understand to be the best practice. And the best practice is distance first, that's your primary. We don't want any residential units, nothing that can combust next to the fire, next, because it's ultimately our things that burn and that's our loss, but we don't want that to perpetuate loss outside. The runoff issue stems from trying to put these things out and no matter how much water you pour on it, sometimes it will suppress it. And then on top of that, it might even re-flare, reignite after all that water's been poured on it. And we learned that through multiple iterations of fire events that have happened across the United States over the last three or four years. So by letting it burn, we're actually consuming all of the gas that could cause an explosion. And um, our hope and I think what, what we're seeing as a trend with batteries is that the containment is getting smaller and smaller. The first generation of batteries would basically walk in container, you'd walk in and that whole thing would go up in flames. And now it's down to, you know, a, a single container that will not propagate to other containers. Eventually it'll get to the cell level where just the cell itself burns up, but the cells around it are fine. That's the direction we want to get to, that's not where we're at now. Um, maybe they will come around with a suppressant that is superior and that is the best practice. But if that is the case, you might have to, you would have to amend this code to allow for that to be the solution.
I think, I think how I explain things for non-electrical or people that are not in the electrical side of things is that fire is equivalent to energy. So if you let it burn, you know that the energy goes to zero. So the uh, risk goes to zero too, whereas if you try to put it off, you could have a bad reading or you could have lost connection because the cables are burned for, with that unit. So you, you don't know if there is energy there or not. So then if you put it out, in a normal situation, you think that the problem is gone. Whereas in here is not the case, you have energy contained on a container and you put the fire out, but the, the energy is still there, so you need to deal with that. So the best thing to do is contain the fire, so only one unit burns. And that way you can, when the fire is out, you can evaluate the other units, you are measuring, measuring them remotely. You can run a few tests, then problem solved. Whereas if you put the fire out, most of the accidents that has happened in the New York area is that the problem has increased because you put the fire out and then you go and open the door. Right.
So I, I think the, for the townspeople to watch the fire billowing with smoke for three to seven days is gonna be pretty unacceptable. So, um, you know, they would be like, how could you have possibly let this into our town? This is totally unacceptable. And then the other side of that bad coin is, oh, let's spray water on it. Now you've got this, you know, drainage of, of bad chemicals into all of the sewer system or whatever. Are there provisions for a, uh, you know, battery fire blanket to just develop the entire container then? To reduce, you know, the D V blankets, but are they big enough now for an entire container?
I, I think the, the way the technology goes is that because the the systems are getting smaller and smaller, now the uh, cooling system is inside the container and on the top. So basically you have more safety before the temp, temperature ra- raises. So the temperature doesn't raise. And in that uh, topic also, the structures are a little bit more resistant. You have polymers that you can spray, like uh, the same that you do your bed truck in Linux. So you have a modification of that that you can cover the, the. So we, again, safety is the number one thing and buyers is the topic. So we will research a little bit more and make sure we provide the right information for an alternative to just let it burn, which again.
Yeah, that's the strategy Captain Carlson advocates as well.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Good, no be.
That's theoretical, but I'm saying when the townspeople see five, seven days of black smoke from off in the woods somewhere, I'm very concerned. Have, um, have you approached the property owners in these districts to?
Uh, we just had dinner with the Everlyns, they are on board. We explained the site plan, we explained what's going on, we didn't mean, we didn't mean, wanted to bring them because we were not project specific. But anytime that you guys want to meet them, they can come.
Well, you've got pretty distinct regions for these overlays that they can put a few pieces of property, yes.
Right, we chose the properties that are next to the sub and parallel to the line because then whatever the utility says, we can uh, connect one way or the other. So that, that was the reason to go into these two subs. And one of them would be Everlyns and the other one is. You said, and then that's it. Yeah, I cannot pronounce that last name correctly.
So what's gonna go on with the temporary substation that they're putting on Amazon, X H K World, what would, how would that affect your project?
So Mr. Everly, Mr. Everly says.
Route twenty-first and then do that one there.
So Mr. Everly says that nothing is temporary here, so that's, it does true. But it, it's um, all about the same, like uh, we went. We are done with the crisis because of COVID, so now we are developing more than ever, not only charter body authority everywhere. Or everywhere we go, there is development, there are things going on. So there is more infrastructure needed, more substations. In this case, you have the uh, gas plant, you have Amazon, there is more development coming in, so you need energy. So you always find different ways of energy and the reason why we came here is because there was a, a state mandate. And they wanted to implement more solar and storage, so that, that, that caused, uh, so it's always the same. The substation was there because they needed more power and the energy storage is coming to place because you can provide energy when they need it and you can regulate. And the best way to regulate the system is going to a sub, which already has the controls and it already has the monitoring system, so. We are just independent from each other, so.
Um, so the, the next phase of this would be a public hearing.
This is the public.
This is the public hearing. So you're looking for a recommendation up on the planning board whether to approve or disapprove.
Support, support.
Support or?
Yeah, it's probably best to get the information from Dennis Carlson. Captain Carlson showed that he's incorporated into bylaw revision because whatever language, whatever language presented that town meeting. So we want to be on the same page as far as with them. Whatever they're requesting to be approved is what, what the council will, you know, recommend after we're all, we get the same wording.
So that, again, you would need us to, to make our recommendations to what they presented and then give it to somebody to look at to make sure it's legal.
What gets reviewed, let's just say that we support it and it goes to town, we get to prove it.
Yeah, I mean, we usually had town council look at proposals prior to.
Yeah, when they're more um, complicated like this one, then it's, they did that with the projects for the changes, the B E P for Amazon, everything. Make sure the wording is correct, so it's you know, legal and can be upheld and understandable, so. This, this is one of those types of applications where it's probably recommended that make sure that there's no loopholes that we're missing or they're missing, so that it can be upheld to prove that town meeting. It's up when they go to the Attorney General, Chief Brian Spall, where they're gonna get kicked back to us.
Right, and then this will undoubtedly open the door for developers on the other side of town, lots of solar. To consider the district.
Well, they'll have to find a really good planner to write it for them, because.
I, I think, I think for us it's consistency, so it's the same for everyone. Keeping this out of court too.
Correct.
It's the goal, it's the goal, and to keep the tunnel where it's going. I think there's not, hasn't been a lot of.
The year is still young.
I think we have a question from someone in the public.
Yeah.
Or she's in her hand.
At the last meeting, our building commissioner, um, I guess asked for the parcel numbers for the overlay because it's pretty gray as to where it ends. Um, has the applicant looked into that?
Yeah, um, good question, and essentially uh, we can, we, we this, this has been an interesting question to, to raise because ideally, you know, we, we do it based on the map that I've kind of done where there's a limited scope of what it could entail. But based on the building commissioner's suggestion, we, we should use parcel lines, it's easier to manage in a minute's period. So this is the current proposal for what parcels would be eligible to request a special use permit for battery storage system shown in kind of, I guess, pink. And I can send you the numbers to each parcel that are not listed on this particular exhibit.
But we can do a parcel specific.
Right.
So how many acres are there? It, it looks very large, so approximately how many acres are being affected here?
I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, because it looks like you can have forty-three megawatts of storage for every acre. Um, and we do have some significant acreage in those parcels. So again, I would like the planning board to consider a tap because based on what's there, we could have a million megawatts of storage. If it's only, you, you need very little acreage, so just so we're not, we don't turn into the, the capital of the state in containers of batteries.
And I will mention a couple of things that restrict the size. Um, there's partly proposed language is a um, essentially a maximum disturbed area, I think it's no more than thirty percent of the parcel can be disturbed or, or you know, removed vegetation and so forth. So there are some limitations based on the size of the parcel. I would, I would point out that as time goes on and, and technology changes, you know, the, this amount of storage you can fit in a square foot or an acre will increase just by the nature of the technology. Um, so I would be an advocate for, for things that are more tied to acreage because that's sort of the, the pain point, it's just the amount of space that's used rather than the amount of capacity or power that could be provided by the system. If that makes sense, you know, we, essentially over time, we expect to, to be able to, to have more capacity per acre.
Yeah, that makes sense, um, but again, it's, if this is gonna pass at a town meeting, they're gonna want to have some strict guidelines.
We will do the modification, yeah, to show the exact acres on the parcel.
Also, have you, since you need to, to cool these units, so even if you let it burn out, which um, which is what the country is doing, you would need some town water because of, you know, you need fifty thousand gallons for a Tesla battery in a car just to keep it cool, so it doesn't go to the other containers. Uh, we do have town water, I believe, up to Carl's Stores, and then it does go by the Kazowski property on Sampson. So would you be open to running that lineup?
Laurie, I don't think there's town water still.
Oh, it is. Yeah. So for burning it out, to keep it from the other combustible containers, it's gonna have to be cooled. So there may be something that they can do, uh, like we did on Route twenty with the ponds for, for fire control. And then lastly, because of how the tax laws are written and Massachusetts wants carbon neutral, the benefits for these companies are amazing, that, you know, it's, they're moving fast. I would like to see them look at that host agreement, uh, the Board of Selectmen have a policy on host agreements, and that would protect us as a town. Because as you know, what we've been told we get taxes on, then they change the laws and we don't. They sell it to a nonprofit, we get nothing. So I would think that you might want to run this by the selectman and the, the tax collector to protect us, that we get something out of this, not just twenty thousand dollars a year. Just my two cents, thank you.
Thanks, Laurie.
So what was the first question?
Uh, so.
Well, the acre, the.
Uh, the acres can be done, the parcel was a recommendation from the fire chief or Captain Carlson, so we agree on that, we can do that. We can provide the alternative to water, which again, normally you don't put the fire with water, it's like a suppressant. But the water use, uh, there, there is no water used to cool the, the system down. It has its own cooling system, it's a closed loop, there is no water connected to the batteries at all. It has its own cooling system, it's a closed loop, there is no water connected to the body, it is at all.
I, I think she might have meant cooling the adjacent with water.
We will provide, I think we need to provide a little bit more information in the fire suppression, all of the cooling system.
Right.
If there is an event.
It could, I would say too, that might also be a special use permit scoped item as well, because at this point, we're basically saying that the zoning would allow for the siding, but that maybe some of the more site-specific details would be borne out in a special use permit.
But then the money stuff that is the most involved, and I think um, we have a few, uh, how do you call it? Money, uh, uh.
Revenue share?
Revenue share that we brought to specific counties, I think two or three in Virginia that go to boot. So basically, it's a, it's not one day thing, so you'd have to involve the legal departments, because again, if something is not legally sound, we cannot do the project, even if it benefits us, if you say zero bond, uh, that, that might be risky, so nobody will invest on the project. Or the investment agencies won't consider the project, so with, with uh, cost sharing, you need to be really specific, especially if you have a state mandate or a state uh, policy or the exception, so uh, the legal departments will need to meet and uh, normally what we do is we provide what we just done. And then you guys brainstorm and if you like it, then we, we start working on that model, but there are things that can be approved, again, with like a, a condition, A, the site plan is approved contingent upon A, B, C, and D, or we, we are a very good fan of it because it allows us to move. Whereas if there is a ongoing conversation that nobody agrees on anything or doesn't go nowhere, then we don't have a sign approval, and then uh, the bonds go up. You know, so, you know, it's, uh, we, we always like the conditions because then it's, it's not cleared and we didn't work on something, and we have a project at that point, yeah.
There's one more question.
Go ahead, John.
So how, how many do you actually own and how many do you actually? Projects you directly control right now and how many? Is it a model to develop them and sell them, develop them, hold them for a year and sell them, sell them right now?
So we are a development shop.
Yep.
We develop utility scale solar, we have around twenty projects in this cycle, about maybe thirty, forty projects total that we have developed so far. We have a storage, around twenty-three projects, uh, community solar, uh, a little bit more, maybe a hundred. So overall, we have projects everywhere that we own. Now we are a development shop, it's like the gentleman here presenting the first project, they develop and then they sell the project. Because um, solar and any, and a storage is a little bit uh, more complicated than what we do, we stayed in all the development and uh, construction. But then the owners are always our partners, which are normally big corporations or uh, uh, utilities that specialize in energy storage and utility scale solar. So we will be part of that, but at that point, when the switch is on, we will not be the decision maker. Although we still have people that call us or call me uh, personally if there is a problem, but we won't be the owners.
Would there be a chance to get a resume? You know, uh, they presented you a list of projects they've done in the past, okay?
We, we have, I think both that, we have a yeah, like a bio, a company bio.
Exactly.
Is that? Yes, so my English is getting better.
Just so we could, you know, reach out to and see how it went with other communities and
Yeah.
Just to do some due diligence on this.
And we have uh, uh, property owners as well, and uh, that we have worked with, so, yeah, we got.
I think the more information we have about the whole thing, then we can answer any questions, where Laurie, Laurie's awesome, she has Laurie does a lot of work on it.
The lady is.
Yeah, she, she's very knowledgeable, but to the rest of the town.
She's not a neighbor?
No.
No.
Yeah. But uh, but as long, so we have information that we could provide.
Yes, sir.
If you could provide that to me.
Yeah. Sorry, Laurie, is your hand still up or you?
Yeah, I don't know, I have a question.
Oops, sorry. Lower my hand.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you.
Do we want to wait to get information from Captain Carlson or anyone else before we propose it? Or make a recommendation?
Yeah, get a more finished version, because whatever that's gonna be, that's gonna be what's on the one. If you want to have it, it's complete possible, so that you're making an informed decision and the language is straight out, so that it will uphold, if you go to town meeting and vote it, you shouldn't get.
Request, no, suggestion.
Yeah.
Conditional approval?
Well, if I can do two, I will say my first suggestion is approve it without condition. Now, uh, so I would say that anything you need, uh, just let us know, because we haven't submitted a project. So I believe that communication is legal, is that true?
Sure.
So I would say even if it's small or even you have a, just a suggestion or whatever it is, uh, we are more than happy to come here, I think you've met the team uh, last week, no? Two weeks ago, and this week, we still have more people that can come. Uh, uh, so we prefer to have all the information or to have more debate than less, so that way, if the project doesn't go through the overlay district, it's not approved, at least it's not because of us. So just let us know, I mean, this is an important project for us.
So just clarifying questions, my question earlier about the, the property owners. So you did mention the property owners where your site actually sits on, but have you spoken with the property layers, owners that are within that whole overlay district?
No, because the idea was to just be fair, just in case there were other people that wanted to get involved. But uh, we are very happy to just reduce it to one parcel.
Uh, but one thing I was gonna ask, actually, since you brought that up, um, we thought, we were wondering if there might be a language that, so we don't wanna impose this on anyone, essentially.
That's, that's my concern, is it might be some people in there that are, are like, no, I, I don't want this on my property.
Right.
Okay, you tried to force me to do this.
There are, not to get super planterees, but there are these, this notion of floating overlays, which is essentially something you opt into. It's not something that you automatically get, but through affidavit or through whatever means you think is appropriate as a property owner, you could opt into the overlay. And so maybe the parcels you see here would be eligible to opt in, but they wouldn't be automatically allowed.
Is that a problem, we just do the parcels that would have segments on?
My only issue with that is the defense sensibility of the ordinance.
It, it becomes site zoning.
Right.
Spot so, you, you might have trouble finding it.
Yeah, ultimately, our ambition or intention is for this to withstand challenges legally or otherwise, and uh, because of this.
We gotta find out, they're not doing that thing.
So, so like, what you're saying, an opt-in zoning.
Correct, yeah, closing zone.
But if you have a cap and there is already a parcel that opts in, then automatically the other ones will be out of the question.
No, no, not necessarily, everything, and at the end of the day, like you know, no one's telling, e- even if we did it this way, no one's saying you have to do battery storage. You could do battery storage, I think the issue I see is that neighbors who don't want battery storage anywhere near their house may not want the overlay districts if they live in that area.
That's kind of my thought, that if you're within that district, like they don't want, and you don't want it, but you don't want your neighbor to have it either.
That's the issue I see.
That's, that's the problem I can see now, because I mean, you've got houses in there that are within that district that probably wouldn't be eligible or, or a good choice for it. But they're in the district and I don't know what my neighbor's gonna do.
Right, could, could we do like a, like a minimum interface requirement, so the opposite? That there, only parcels that are so big can opt in.
Yeah, we can do that, it's still.
That way you eliminate any parcel that has a house on it and the neighboring parcel.
Yeah, there, there's not.
For example.
In here, do you, do you have a? I mean, so, yeah, it's, it's not really the case that there are, the big parcels are the ones that do have.
These over here cannot be used because that's a, uh, easement, uh, reservation easement, so that, that's why the, the solar field is so uh, broken, you know, the new, the flat area over here and over there.
That's.
Half of it is out of the equation, because uh, all of this is the same parcel. And then this is owned by the utility, so they are not gonna do anything with it, they just preserve the lands and infrastructure, but we could, i- if you guys don't have to vote today, then we could keep working and proposing uh, what we are discussing, but maybe a little bit more clear.
Yeah, I'm just con- concerned for your, your plan with the town. I don't know, I'm, I'm not here, having such a large zone with so many properties involved would be beneficial for you, but I, I don't.
It's a tough one. Think about that.
Be floating over. Yeah, but we also have property limits, I mean, we have other bylaws that allow certain things in certain districts by acreage, something like that.
That map where you had it actually at property boundaries?
Just in the presentation document, I saw.
Do I have that?
I mean, the, the setbacks will disqualify some of these house lots. How can I get that?
Yes.
So that might be enough.
Especially because, again, from the sub to the property, uh, in one case, in Comperton Hill, there is a very small parcel, so that will be disqualified and it has a house on it. And then on the other sub, town shadow, uh, that one has two small butyl and, and a non-property owner. Those parcels are really small too, so and then the next parcel down has a solar facility, so.
That may take care of that right there.
Yeah, and then on the south, you have the utility, so then that's it, you have the road, the road that you want.
Yeah, between the acreage, minimum acreage.
But if we have time, when will, when will be the next meeting that, uh, you guys are gonna call?
Our next scheduled meeting is February third, so seven, seven.
So how, how well in advance do we have to have this to you for you to discuss it at the meeting, or as soon as we have it at the meeting, that's fine.
Well, the, the main issue actually is, we have an attorney who do it, how long is it gonna take him to review it?
And this is something Costco can do?
Or Mark from Ralphie. Probably the most logical.
Yes.
So what would be the next step, then?
Our next meeting is February seventh. Worst case, we could schedule you for it, and worst case scenario, if we haven't got the final answer from him, um, we can continue it to like February twenty-first meeting.
Okay.
So you know prior before you like came all the way up here and then I think so.
And the, and the objective of March, what was it about then?
Just to get it into the selectmen agenda.
Yeah, we have to get it on the town warrant um, to be, to, in order to be presented at the town meeting, which is in May. So I, at this point, I would put you on as a placeholder, I mean, they're holding a place for you. It doesn't mean the final, there are the final documents, it just means you're listed on the warrant, so that you won't lose the opportunity to go to the town meeting.
Okay.
So that builds it a little bit more time for you to iron out the details.
And the town meeting is still would be in May.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds like a plan, I mean, then it's an ongoing work, it's less painful.
Yeah, so I we will schedule you for February seventh, and if the attorney hasn't gotten back to us, you know, all you have to do is just request you on, we continue till February twenty-first, because the first and third runs every month, so.
Hopefully in May, it's a little warmer.
Maybe.
Where, where are you from? Where?
Yeah, anywhere in Florida is warmer than here.
So you had to buy the north face to, just to come up, although it's
I use the, not too often and then they crack, so.
Uh, it's been cold down in Florida the past week or so, so.
It's true.
Always above fifty.
All right, do you have a motion to continue the public hearing to February seventh?
Can I ask just one more question first? Is this bylaw been adopted in other municipalities, similar to what you bring, or have you gone through the process of getting this adopted in other?
This is the first, well, so I, I mean, my background is, I've been an consultant for many years until just now joining this team. So I've done this type of work for many jurisdictions around.
And, and now you're seeing a need for it, so you hired a planner to, to help facilitate these things going, going in other places. Well, have your company passed any municipality bylaws, or is this the first?
I think no, we first, well, in, in the stories, this is the first time we go that round, but uh, we work with municipalities all the time. Yeah, so in Virginia, uh, for example, we have a situation in Calipas County where they had a very restricted ordinance that didn't allow big solar, a hundred new watts plus. And uh, really restricted lots of farmers to develop solar that was thirty acres or below, and there was a new program, again, it's always the same, the state brings the program, that is like a call for us, and then we go and we discover those uh, contradictions, and so we work with the county to figure the metrics to allow for solar.
So this is the first off the battery.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question. And, and the language is kind of a hedgehog of language you've already have in your, but then also what we determined if you guys practice this from other.
Randy, do you know the date of the town meeting? The date of the town meeting?
No idea.
Thirteenth or twentieth?
Wait, the nineteenth, it's one hour to the nineteenth, but I'm not certain about that, so.
Nineteenth is Sunday, twentieth is the Monday.
Well, the election's on the fourth, right? The election's on the fourth.
It wouldn't be the sixth.
Um, I make a motion to, uh, do we wanna do it in first? Make a motion to continue the public hearing for battery storage, uh, E S A town bylaw to February seventh, at seven thirty P M.
Second, Dan?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we got next area, energy, North Side of Road, solar site plan, field modification.
They get a lot of ledge up there, for them too, and uh, so they made a couple of modifications, went to Mike Andrew. He's recommending that the modifications can be done as a field change, which is a full-site plan modification, so playing board just has to vote whether they. Modification is a field change. Yes.
Well, it's a modification. You're just counting down, come on.
So it's just like some electrical stuff due to ledge?
Yeah, and they do a little modification, they don't have to be, but Mike Andrew is, uh, you know, recommended. You know, recommended that modifications can be approved in the field change there.
There's still, um.
Well, can you hear it from your house?
Yeah.
Are they drilling and blasting?
I don't hear the blasting, but, but the pounding. And they have, they must have been.
Yes.
One time, I think. Do you remember when I walked down the house?
Because depends what, if they, if they have the poles that will screw.
Okay, so. I thought it was for electrical ones.
Well, they drill it right into legs, they drill those.
Yeah. That's what it is, that's what they're doing, that's all I can hear.
It was just the morning when I walked out of the house coming to look and said, oh, they got another circuit.
Probably the wall sander drills and. A little bit thinking of that. Um, uh, in, in reality, I think we've. Done this as a field change before, so. Well, has, has anyone seen it? Like, where's the plan of it?
As far as the accuracy of it, so.
Just get burned down.
Yeah.
We just get burned down.
Um. Is there a motion to approve?
Well, I, do we have anything other than this letter from Graves or?
I mean, this is what we've gone with the, on, over the past.
Yeah, and they, they had submitted a, a be. By fortune, the cannon to grade show what they were, what the changes were. They might recommend that, you know, they have to provide an ad bill showing those changes on the ad bill once they don't. And the project is complete, they tend not to do it during the field change stages, because there might be more in the future. If it was a site plan modification, then they would have to submit it.
So they added a ton of, uh, they, they added quite a few more panels to the site, right? Did that? Change the area at all, or did the panels just get smaller and they added more panels?
I can't answer that, what it was.
And, and the technology?
It wasn't, sorry.
That's okay.
Mister Chair, sorry, it, um, I said eighteen thousand panels, they added eighteen hundred. I was in the office. Last year and actually reviewed the plan and compared it to the old plan, and this is when. They cleared more than they were supposed to and conservation got involved. And then the conservation agent happened to be on one of the calls and said, yes, they had put a stop on the project. Because they cleared more than was supposed to. They told Randy that the panels were more efficient, but they added eighteen hundred more and cleared more. I think we already dealt with it like a year ago.
You deal with the clearing more? Because in, in, in past projects, we've made them.
Plant stuff.
Plant stuff now.
Yeah, we did that on, um.
COVID road.
In Patrick's.
Or in Patrick's.
Yeah, COVID, exactly, yeah, yeah, correct.
So the COVID project, we had, um.
Planting plant.
Fix that.
Yeah.
Did we, have, have we looked at this one to see, I mean, is it, does it affect nearby properties?
It did come, I remember, they cleared more and then. And I don't know what our resolution was, but I do remember them telling to the board, you know, we came up with a resolution. I don't know if it affected it or for most service, for most service.
Yeah, it was.
Missed that.
It was the last two or three years, it gave them exactly what they, they also had a change. Uh, location, detention base.
Yeah.
And.
This was even before they even started construction.
Right.
Right, that's sad. Long time.
Right.
I don't think the abutter cared, that there's a brown split level and they didn't seem to mind. They have a lot of wood stacked, so maybe they did come to some agreement.
But I can request that Graves, they're doing site inspections.
Just check it out.
Huh?
Yeah, some verified.
To make sure the same within the limits of disturbance.
Yeah, as long as the fence line doesn't change or any. That's, that's the bottom line, it's when they, they overthrow the footprint that they, they're attending.
Right.
And there's setback issues and, and all that, so.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve, this is a field change. For, for. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all right.
A hesitant aye.
All right, next up, we have a draft minutes from January third.
Yeah. I didn't realize that we, I mean. You got a copy of it, right?
John, this was the meaning that we got candy to ourselves.
It was my big night, uh.
Bill had us sit up there and watch this.
There was no one here. No one here to appreciate the magnificence of me as a champ. They were big shoes to be put.
What we're preparing for our Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
Which talking. Oh, yeah, I mean, I couldn't help much worse. For a short little thing there.
Randy, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we talked about the Stevie's Family Trust before, did. You said that did not go to Cosgrove?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the. Planning board meeting, first January third, two thousand twenty four.
The second, all those in favor? Aye. Stay.
Aye.
I'm staying. Randy, you got anything for other business on another time of posting?
Um, there's, uh. I've been on ways, probably there's nothing, it's news really been happening at the moment. It's winter time, the people working on these projects. As I said before, we have across from this proposal project, some probably crossing, they're worth no one. We also have another project on North Main Street. Both of them, the similar type developments to what Mister Care is proposing. And we have, uh, Jim is, uh. Working on an application for a new car dealer at the location of the existing. Drive range in miniature golf or move twenty. That actually is in the works.
Um, what about, where are we at with, um. The property on Sturbridge Road next to Zorbas?
The doctor.
The, the doctor, yeah.
Professional office there.
Yeah, the professional office there, have we done final approvals there? Have we? Voted on their parking situation and, do you said you were gonna go by and take a look at it, right? Did we already vote on that?
We did not.
We did not.
We, there's not a lot of people here.
Yes, did you take a look?
One and then pulled around and there was no one there at the time, so it's like.
Okay.
I went there and there were, there were cars parked, but quite a few cars parked when I went.
I didn't see some, like, people and it was wet and kind of wider than the footprint, but. Yeah, that's. My only thing is that, again, two people, I just realized that two people died in front of treehouse.
Oh.
And, and October, so.
The left hand turn out of there, right?
Oh, there is.
There is, yeah.
The treehouse is this.
No, this one. Yeah, all right.
Mass D O T's proposal to re-strike Route twenty. So the eastbound lane, starting at Route forty nine can merge into one lane. Go all the way past treehouse. Until just before Amazon, then open up the two lanes again, so they can go back to one lane.
I didn't say it was a good idea, I said that's what.
I just got the road plan today.
I, I remember hearing that, I, then it opens two and then back down to one. Uh, so at least, but the westbound's gonna remain two, this is on the westbound side, so at least. That's, you know, some.
To at least stay going west.
Yeah, did, did your, was your feeling that that parking was adequate to pull a car into the ground?
Yeah, I, because I had my truck, actually, so I. Well, I had it. A little bit, but my trucks.
Remember the, the proposed handicap spot is along.
Yeah, along the.
So I'm thinking with a handicap there, with a car at that point pulling in, turning out.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the thing, because if, if the handicaps here, whatever oversee, what's in that clutch is, is no good, so. I, I. You know, it was kind of. To us, it was. Yeah, it's a small project and we don't want to cover, we cover them. But a small project was on Route twenty, you know, that's, that's the thing, you know, that's. Any other road would be like, yeah, well, you, you can jerk, jack it around a couple times and you're not gonna be. But, but you're likely again trying to get out of there, so.
I would, you know, I would, I don't know if we could ask them, because it was still tight, but. If, are they, the only thing to do now is like, are you actually advising the people that come in? So pamphlet your whole like, and now or something like, please, you know, just to reinforce that. You know, that, that is a busy road, with your. Right turn only.
I remember it from the hearing though, where that's they said.
He said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to be too over regulatory, but.
I, I guess, yeah. But still, still wanna be safe and you don't want that to back bite, but you allow this in and, you know, person died, we go.
Oh, that's a. It just goes back to the whole retention and something like that, it's like, yeah. I gave it about a sixty-five, this time getting out of it, it was like, it wasn't fairly bad.
So they need to come back in front of the board, we need to discuss it with the board and.
And just reaffirm.
From that, that's, yeah, because that, that hasn't been closed yet. It was, it was approved with a stipulation that.
And they made.
We view the.
And they made their, they made their attempt to appease what.
So they did give us.
The drawing.
With measure. So maybe just more signage and. We have it out on the agenda for next time, so that we can get that closed.
Yeah. There's a posting in there, it's like.
Yeah, let's, let's close on that, nothing but opening them.
Back in.
Yeah, right now. I'm not sure if they're running the business out of there yet. Um, I need to be such a car.
Like they said, they weren't gonna be there during the weekend and they weren't.
They weren't, no, I went back to in the week, last weekend, like I said, there were probably four or five cars or not. At least four cars. A lot of business doesn't buy it. I still think they need to put plenty more approval before they can really, before they're supposed to get the, the opportunities. So, let's get back to those now.
Well, because they have some issues with Kurt, with ADA, no, they, they need to be ADA inside, I don't know if Kurt has gotten this. They said the state does that.
Yeah.
And they may just be in there doing work.
Yeah. But, but. Isn't anything going on up the street there at two forty-one? They're clearing, right?
Well, they've kind of been stopped because they. Um, I mean, they are working, but they have a lot of issues over there, so.
That'll wait.
There, it's a mess, but I mean, they are working, yeah.
I ask what's going on to the property across the street there. Are they going to escape the business there or right before it?
We're gonna have a. At our next meeting.
Yep. Next meeting, they're on.
Are they? Yeah.
They're gonna put a facility up there or?
They'll put this building.
Yeah, they already approved for the building, it's the other half, you know. And it's dropped, so.
First, if no one has anything else, do we have, uh?
Do we have podcasts coming up?
I love this thing, yeah. We've got a podcast deadline.
Sixty day, was there ninety day limit coming up for?
Yes, that's gonna be in February.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Nothing more for me.
Aren't any? Motion for the. For the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Two ayes there.
There was two of them there.
Aye, aye.